Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Seeing Quorum, the chair opens up the Wednesday, March 1st, 2023 meeting of the Mashpee Planning Board, being held here at Mashpee Town Hall in the Racoit Meeting Room, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Massachusetts. The time is 7:00. Just want to welcome everybody, let everybody know we're being live broadcast on Channel 18, streamed live on Mashpee, Town and Mashpee website, HTTPS, full colon, slash slash WWW.MASHBMA.GOV, slash channel dash 18. So we're being videographed and recorded tonight. I want to welcome everybody. I'd like to start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I invite you now to raise and stand with me.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, and eternal, and just as for all.
Thank you. In our packet, we have meeting minutes from February 1st, 2023. So I've read them. I don't have any edits or additions. Does anybody have any comments on the minutes of February 1st, 2023?
I'm good. Motion to approve.
As presented, is there a second to that motion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Thank you. We have a 7:10 public hearing, so we have a few minutes before that. You want to do a little bit of old business? Let's see. We passed in a zoning bylaw regarding solar energy facilities in town. The Board of Selectmen have that bylaw, and they're starting to review the warrant. So I've been in touch with the town manager about going and being available to the Board of Selectmen when they discuss that item. And I had some dates from our town manager. He said March 13th or March 20th. Are you available?
I wrote you back. It said March 20th.
March 20th, okay.
Yeah, a little later, you know.
Yeah? And Evan, are you available that night?
Sure.
Okay. So March 20th, everybody's invited to come. Maybe we should post an agenda that we might be in Quorum. You can post that now, like, post it now, and then we won't have to worry about that. Remember? Oh, man. Oh, that was torture. So, okay, good. And that was the only thing I had. There were some petition articles. I think it's in your packet. Is it in the packet?
Yeah, the memo from the town manager's office is in your packets.
So any zoning, a proposed zoning amendment that goes to the Board of Selectmen for inclusion on the town warrant, whether it's by petition or by another entity in town, gets forwarded to us. So for our review. So it doesn't matter if it's citizens' petition or not. Now, do we want to set a public hearing date for that?
I was going to ask you that question.
Yeah.
The, I guess we'll be looking at the first meeting in April at the soonest, which would be April 3rd, excuse me, April 5th, if I'm not mistaken.
Yep. That's Passover Begins, according to my calendar.
Passover, it's not a high holiday, I don't think. Is it?
Yeah, we, we never meet on that day.
On Passover?
Okay. No, no. We always cancel. It's on my calendar, we cancel.
Another date?
Well, let's do, let's do-
We can do the following meeting in April.
Let's do the 19th. That's enough.
It is.
That's enough time. So I'd like to, a motion that we hold the public hearings for all proposed amendments to the zoning bylaw at 7:10 on April 19th? There's, I have a first, is there a second?
Okay.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Can you make sure that the petitioners know?
I can, yes.
I think there's only one zoning, a citizens' petition that comes to us.
There are two zoning petitions that will come to us, as far as I am aware. So the resubmission of the solar articles as a petition, but also the removal of reason or place.
Oh. That's zoning, that's right. And then the wetlands thing is just bylaw. That doesn't come to us.
Correct.
And what do we have to do? I know every year you have to remind me. What do we have to do about these layouts?
Those are petition one, so nothing this cycle. On petition two, you'll need to approve of the plan that the selectmen are authorized to draw by this article.
So we just, we just do that at a regular meeting?
You do. It'll be posted on our agenda upon the next petition, but it's not a public hearing.
Do you want to do that at the next meeting? Or is that too soon?
So these, these are petition one, so there's no plan for the board to review-
Oh, I'm sorry.
For adoption or approval yet. On petition two, I would imagine in October or May 2024. You'll be ready to look at those plans.
These are just the money to make the plans that we'll review. Okay.
So that I understand we're doing solar, the zoning bylaw, solar and raise and replace, these things about getting a design for Watson Drive and Blue Castle, those are?
Correct. The town, the selectmen are required to notify you of rotating petitions, and then subsequently, there are two petitions involved with the road taking. One to authorize the selectmen to prepare a layout, a plan, and then a second petition that the, for the town to accept the layout. And on that, when the plan is drawn, the planning board has to review and approve that plan, prior to the town meeting vote.
Who's the second petition on Watson?
It is not, we're not there.
We have two phase ones.
To get to the second.
Okay, that's right. Because it's money.
Correct.
That's only if, what, 51% of that neighborhood says yes.
That's right.
Otherwise, the town spends their money for nothing.
Not you.
It's a lot of money.
Yeah.
Was there anything else about the zoning bylaw amendments proposed for town meeting?
The solar bylaw, as I read it, is consistent with everything that we've reviewed.
Yeah, yes. Thank you, Evan. Thank you.
Thank you, Evan.
That was like a mad dash.
That's what we expected of us, I'll say.
That's right.
Yeah, that was a mad dash, so that worked out okay. All right, we have one more minute. Do I have a notice to read?
You should, yes. And if you don't have it readily accessible.
I believe I have it.
I do not have it readily accessible. Thank you. Okay, seeing that the appointed time has arrived, the chair opens up the 7:10 public hearing for the applicant Southworth Mashpee Properties LLC. The location is 27 Quinnaquisset Avenue, Assessor's Map 69 Block 32. I'm going to read into the record our public hearing notice. Pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 11, the Mashpee Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, March 1st, 2023, at 7:10 at the Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Massachusetts, to consider an application from Southworth Mashpee Properties LLC, property owner, to modify the Willow Bend Country Club special permit. The applicant proposes to construct a 14-unit, single-family cottage community immediately contiguous to the Willow Bend Golf Course at 275 Quinnaquisset Avenue, Assessor's Map 69 Block 32. The existing single-family dwelling at the site, okay, is proposed for demolition. With these changes, the total unit count for Willow Bend will be increased to 287 if the board authorizes the annexation of 275 Quinnaquisset into the Willow Bend special permit as allowed. 287 dwelling units is the maximum number of dwelling units authorized under the special permit. All units will be connected to and served by an existing privately-owned wastewater treatment plant, which serves the entire Willow Bend project. That was submitted by me, Mary E. Weg, and Planning Board Chair. The publication dates in the newspaper were Friday, February 10th, 2023, and Friday, February 17th, 2023. So what I'd like to do, hi, everybody. So what I'd like, I'd like to do is invite the project proponent up to make a presentation. Everybody that's in here today for this matter will have an opportunity to speak at some point tonight. What I usually do is hear the project proponent. I go around and ask the board members if they have any questions. I then go to the town planner and the town engineer. A lot of times, that way, people's questions are answered, and then I'll open it up to the public. Anyways, so I'd like to recognize the project proponent. So go ahead, introduce yourselves and go forward.
Good evening. For the record, Jack McLeeny, attorney for Southworth Mashpee Properties, the owner of the Willow Bend Country Club project. With me, Matt Eddy from Baxton High Engineering and Survey, who's our project surveyor and site engineer. On the Zoom call, Troy Miller, who is the Director of Development for Southworth, is traveling and could not be here tonight, but he is available on Zoom.
One minute, Jack. So Troy, can you hear us?
Yes, ma'am, I can hear you fine.
Okay, just testing. Go ahead, Jack.
Troy is-
Thank you.
Yes, and then Dennis Ring, who is the President of Southworth Construction and oversees all the construction activity. Just briefly, in terms of background, as the notice indicated, we're proposing 14 single-family cottages on the five-acre piece known as 275 Quinnaquisset Ave. The project name to be known is Cranberry Point. This property was acquired in 2019 by Southworth. It's currently approved by a single five-bedroom home, which is serviced by a septic system. The piece, as you can see on the overhead, is surrounded entirely by the existing golf course. I refer to this piece as the donut, the hole in the donut, if you will. It's five acres surrounded by 400 acres of the existing development. The property was not part of the original special permit back in 1987, when the project was initially developed. But when it was acquired, we did have some preliminary discussions, some of you may recall, with this board about potentially including this piece in a townwide initiative to develop a cottage colony bylaw, which would allow for small infill projects at a higher density. But after input from the board and others, that proposal was not pursued. Instead, we are now seeking to proceed under Section 17424(c)(9) of the bylaw, which allows this board to modify the special permit to essentially annex in contiguous land, such as, such as this, to bring it under the special permit, provided that doing so does not increase the number of available permits or decrease the overall amount of open space, and this project would satisfy both criteria.
Can you say, I'm sorry, Jack, can you repeat those two criteria?
Yes.
As long as you-
You do not increase the number of available units under the overall permit or decrease the existing open space under the permit. This essentially means that this land is added to the special permit. You do not get any density credit for that. So we're adding five acres. Doesn't increase or allow us to increase our 287 permit limit, but we can relocate some of those permits onto this piece, which is what we're proposing. As noted, the current maximum unit count at Willow Bend is currently fixed at 287 units, of which 274 have previously been approved by this board or prior boards and have been constructed, with the exception of maybe a handful of vacant lots. Maybe there are five or six left, but not more, not many. So we're proposing to allocate the remaining 13 permits we have available to this parcel, and then we're requesting acknowledgement or to reclaim one permit from North Glen Drive, which was a double lot bought by a single owner, who then decided he was not going to build on the second lot, but wanted a pool, and he put a permanent restriction on that lot, that it would never be built. So that makes that permit available, if you will. Couple specific points, and then I'll turn it over to Matt. It was brought to our attention that, a question regarding the original permit, which did in fact have a condition in it in 1987, that required a 100-foot buffer along Quinnaquisset Avenue that would be maintained in a vegetative state. That was included as a condition of the original permit. The bylaw at that time required a minimum vegetative buffer of 40 feet. The board had the discretion to impose a greater buffer, which it did at that point, but it also has the legal authority in connection with this to require anything in excess of 40 feet. And there have been other instances, like the 2006 approval up at Willow Circle, which is on Quinnaquisset, where there was, the 100-foot buffer was not, was not required. Again, that was a developed property, so there really wasn't a lot of vegetation. But it is not a mandatory bylaw requirement. Just briefly, Matt's going to speak to this more, but it's a very important part of our, of our project. Our project will entail some wetland impacts, and as part of that, it is mitigation. We are proposing what we think is a very significant mitigation effort, which will essentially involve the retirement of two and a half acres of active cranberry bog that is irrigated and adjacent through Quaker Run. We are proposing as mitigation that we would abandon any active agriculture in that area. We would restore the natural vegetation species in that area, and allow the whole area to renaturalize. That's over two and a half acres, which we think is going to significantly improve water quality, both at Quaker Run and, of course, downstream in Shoestring Bay. So, you know, with that overview, I'll turn it over to Matt to run through the major elements of the site plan.
Thank you, Jack. For the record, Matthew Eddy, professional engineer with Baxton High Engineering and Surveying. Just a couple of additional items I'll note to what Jack just conveyed. We went through a design review and plan review last week on the 21st and received recommendations as the advisory boards for approval onto the planning board. And then we also will be going through Conservation Commission review under a Noticement Intent filing, which we will be making that filing next week. So with that, the, well, just, I mean, you could go to Sheet 2, I guess, there, Mary, if you could. There you go. No, I'm sorry.
This was the certified plot plan that we were talking about.
Yep, nope, next one, there you go. Yep.
Okay.
So just real quick, we won't go back, but the overall exhibit that was up there initially, as Jack mentioned, you know, the lot is in the center of Willow Bend. I just, I was just going to try to orient everybody to the site.
Want me to go back to that?
I mean, if it's easy enough for you to, Mary, if not, no worries. It would be the number one. Yeah, there you go. So just real quick, again, just to kind of orient everybody. So this is the site here. This is Quinnaquisset Ave along here. We then have the clubhouse for Willow Bend, sits about here. And then obviously, you can see, this is all of the existing Willow Bend special permit area. The green shaded areas are obviously the golf course holes, and then you have all of the residential development throughout, just to orient everybody.
So Matt, so these lots that are to the bottom right, those are not?
These down here?
Yeah.
Those are not part of Willow Bend, that's correct.
So it's kind of like the lots that don't have any drawing of a house on them are not?
I mean, generally, this is an overall exhibit. I mean, there are some lots within Willow Bend that don't have a house shown on these, just for an overall. But this is, you know, the outline is along here, all the way up. Up here is actually, this is Route 28, where there's a small portion here that's actually falls in Barnstable. And then, you know, your property comes down along here, and then you have, here's Orchard Road here. This is the recent Willow Circle subdivision that we did.
Right.
So it's the six lots that we had, so it comes down along there, and then down along this here. This is Shoestring Bay, which area, the residential lots along there, which I'm sure you're all familiar with, and then coming back around.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So yeah, if we could go to that Sheet 2.0, that's just the existing conditions plan. So this is the site plan set that you're seeing up there. So I'll just walk you through the existing conditions of the project site area. Again, address 275 Quinnaquisset Ave. This is the existing parcel area as it sits right now. It's approximately 5.06 acres. About three and a half acres of it is upland, about one and a half acres is wetland. There's over 650 feet of frontage along Quinnaquisset. The site contains isolated and bordering vegetated wetlands, cranberry bogs, and then to the west is Quaker Run. So Quaker Run runs along here. Is it, can you guys see? Okay, no, I'm looking at two screens. Sorry, I'm doing that behind you. So Quaker Run runs along here. We have, and I've numbered these bogs, which you'll understand when I talk about the mitigation, but so I'm calling this bog one. So this whole area, it's not just adjacent to the river, it's in the river, right? So the river is running through these bogs, as it currently exists. That's Bog 1 area, Bog 2 area is here. And then you get away from, again, the Quaker Run runs down and then goes off the plan sheet to the bottom here. And then this is Bog 3, and then Bog 4, that I'll be referencing later. The existing development on the, on the site right now, here is the existing single-family house. It has a five-bedroom septic system, driveway access to it, and then there's different landscape improvements throughout. There's a fair amount of the lot kind of along this edge here that's been disturbed just through the, you know, the construction and use of the, of the lot as the existing single-family residence. So there's been a, you know, fair amount of clearing and ground disturbance. We then have onsite, there's this larger, isolated wetland, I'll call it. That actually is an old cranberry bog that has been, the use has been discontinued, and over the years, it has reforested itself. So I thought my pointer went out for a minute. And so, you know, something that's interesting to kind of think about when you're looking at this is, again, this is the bog area down here. This, this old bog was abandoned. This is a, this is a dike. This is an earth dike that was constructed for these bogs here, and then, you know, back in the day when this was active, that bog as well. So there's already disturbance through that, you know, isolated wetland system here. There's then two small pockets of isolated wetland, which sit about here and about here. And those two areas, if you go out there and look at those, they're actually, you can see it really pretty clearly. They're actually excavated pits for when they're doing cranberry bogs, and they're farming that. They use sand in the, in the process of growing the cranberries, right? And they add sand to the bogs. So a lot of times, they will dig near the bogs, and they get sandy material, and they use that in the bogs. And so it's very clear, when you look at those two isolated areas that sit here and here, that those were excavations by a machine. They took the material out, and then over time, those grew vegetation, and because they were excavated down low, they've became isolated wetlands. So just wanted to kind of point out the, the quality of the, of the wetland systems there.
And can you just show the, the piece that says "edge of bank," the river?
Um.
Yeah, it's that line, right?
It's, yeah, it's right there. Yep. So that defines the edge on our side of the project, if you will. That defines the edge of bank for Quaker Run, which then, is then used to define the riverfront area, which is a 200-foot buffer off of that. And so that's the line that defines it, and then it's a 200-foot buffer into here, and that creates the riverfront area.
And what's that line called? It's the limit of a 200-foot riparian zone?
Yeah, riparian. It's, the riverfront area is referred to as riparian zone. You have inner riparian, which is a zero to 100 feet, and then the 100 to 200 feet is the outer riparian.
So that, it's kind of funny. You have wetlands on both sides. So you have like these zones that are coming from one side, and then another zone that comes from the other side.
Right, yep, you got it.
It took me a while. What is going on with this?
Right.
Okay.
So from a, so just, you know, from a site perspective, as far as kind of resources and so forth, that's what we have on the existing site. From a zoning perspective, it's currently zoned R3. As I mentioned, it's a five-bedroom home that sits on the lot. The house has public water service to it. There's natural gas in the road frontage in Quinnaquisset, and overhead electric. Quiniquissette, and overhead electric. And then again, there's a five-bedroom septic system that serves that existing house. So with that, Mary, if we could go to the next sheet, should be 3.0. Yes, great, thank you. So this is the overall...
Matt, Chair, can I ask you a quick question?
Yes, Ed, go right ahead.
So, Matt, could you go back one, one spot?
Oh, Troy, go.
It's Ed.
I'm sorry.
It's Ed, my bad, it's Ed.
You want to go to two?
Ed's muted, and I was all confused.
Go to sheet 2.0.
2.0.
Could you just point out to everybody the edge of the actual lot boundary?
Yep, so the lot boundary falls along here, right along here, so it's kind of along that existing dike, and comes back, and then this is the frontage along Quiniquissette. So if you went out to the site, you'll see when you're coming down Quiniquissette, there's a gravel drive right here. That's pretty much the property line for this. That's the bog access road that goes along here, if you've noticed that when you're out there, so.
Right, so when you, thank you. But I would, I just wanted to confirm that. So when you get to the mitigation discussion, Matt, would you please explain, obviously that's not part of this parcel, it's someone else's land? And if it's part of Southworth Properties, great, that you're, obviously, just explain that that's land you have control or have access to, to provide mitigation you're proposing, okay?
I could, I could speak to that, it's a good, good point. The entire golf course is controlled by an affiliated entity, Southworth Willow Bend LLC. They, they control the entire 27 holes of golf course. It's under common direction and management, and we would certainly have the ability to do that.
You're going to go to three?
Yep, thank you. Thank you. So this is the master layout plan that's proposed for the project. Obviously, the existing single-family home will be raised in its entirety. We're proposing 14 single-family detached homes for the project. There are also then detached garages that accompany each of the homes. You'll see, the way this was set up, each of these garages, on the majority of these, are, it's two garage bays. There'll be a demising wall inside the garage, so one garage bay goes with this house, and the adjacent garage bay goes to the adjacent house. You'll see down at the bottom of the sheet, on the southerly end, there are three homes, actually four, just from a layout standpoint, that they didn't have a house that's specifically adjacent to it in this kind of symmetrical configuration, so that these each just have the one garage bay individual, as opposed to a double garage bay. Again, each unit getting one of those. There's then also, which I'll get into further description, but then also adjacent, you know, you have your 14 homes, and then part of the project is the development of this golf amenity to the east side of the project. The typical structure footprint for each unit, including its garage space, is about 2,400 square feet. We are providing a 40-foot setback from Quiniquissette that Jack mentioned. The plan is to re-vegetate and enhance that buffer area where possible. Willow Bend is working on landscape plans by a landscape architect for landscaping of the entrance, and then they're also going to provide a typical landscape plan for each lot, so that the homeowner understands what they're, you know, getting in their landscape package, if you will.
Can I ask what a golf course amenity area is?
It's really, I mean, it's a, you know, putting, chipping area, which I'm jumping ahead a little bit, but just real quick, why you asked that, so you have, you know, you have your homes here, you know, pedestrian access we're providing, and you're going to probably hear me reiterate this, but we're providing seashell shoulders on the road, so that's your pedestrian access down towards Quiniquissette, then turns into a sidewalk, and we've created a golf cart, so this would be a shallow golf cart path along Quiniquissette that will then ties, this is the existing golf cart path, which is just off the side of the sheet, the plan sheet here, and this ties to the existing golf cart path network, if you will. And then just off of the sheet here, unfortunately, if, you know, if I had thought about it, I would have pulled the view over a little bit more if we could have, but there is a crosswalk right here across Quiniquissette. That's where the golf cart paths go, and then it connects back over onto the other side of Quiniquissette, and to the overall path system there, and then up to the clubhouse, et cetera. And this area right here is referred to as the golf course hole bog one, so it's one of the nine of what they call along the bog. And then if you're familiar with that area, there's a, just right out here, just off of the view of the plan, there's the snack club, you know, there's a little snack shop there that sits at the tee at bog one, if you're familiar with that. So...
And you have a proposed sitting area with fire pit.
Yeah, right, they have, you know, if you, if you go over to like, you know, bog one with that, the snack shop is and so forth, there's just, you know, this all area, this is the large, you know, tee box area, and this is all, all the, you know, the cart pass and all the understore, this is just, you know, kind of pine needles and so forth, if you will, and they just wanted to create a little bit of a, you know, a sitting area, you know, probably some Adirondack chairs, and you can sit and you can watch people, you know, teeing off, and, you know, whatever you may want to be doing, so. So then, back to the layout, so access is provided by a 16-foot wide paved road, then with one-foot Cape Cod berm edge treatment, so it's 18 feet to the outside edge of the Cape Cod berm, and then we're providing a seven-foot seashell surface shoulder along the road edge. The entrance will be gated, similar to the other entrances in Willow Bend. It's not a manned gatehouse, it's just a, you know, a gatehouse structure for aesthetics, and it has the arm control for, you know, access and exiting, which is, you know, controlled by keypad and key cards. The entrance is relocated about 120 feet from the existing driveway entrance, just so when you're out there from an orientation standpoint, you can see on this plan here, that's the clearing area of the existing driveway, so it's, again, shifted about 120 feet to the west. The entrance width for the project is obviously controlled by necessary radii for emergency access, emergency vehicle access. The length of the road is 400 feet and terminates with a T-turnaround. This was all reviewed with the fire department prior to submittal, and then also, again, at plan review. The fire department has approved, the layout has approved the width of the road. We're going to be providing, the cross-section of this road will be the road width plus the shoulders, that'll all be H20 supporting, so they can, they can use the shoulder areas as well, right, yeah, for their outriggers if needed. Hopefully, that'll never be needed, but it's there if necessary.
Say that again, so the shoulders are going to be designed so they can hold the weight of a...
Correct, so the whole, you know, think about the road as a, you know, the entire section of it would be the paved road, you have your Cape Cod berm edge treatment, and then your shoulders, and your shoulders will be constructed with the seashell surface, but with a base that allows it to, you know, there'll be a vehicle loading support, which is referred to as H20. So the fire department wants 20 feet, so it's actually only one foot outside of the Cape Cod berm that they would actually be using, but that entire shoulder width, that whole section from edge of shoulder to edge of shoulder, all the way through that road width, would be capable of supporting vehicle access. So again, so that was reviewed, you know, with the road width, the access here, we, you know, provided a turning template plan showing the tower access into the site, and then turning around in this T-turnaround, and the fire department was happy with that and found that approvable. From a parking standpoint, zoning requires two parking spaces per unit. We're providing two per unit. You have the one garage space that I was referring to previously, and then the driveway, you have a one driveway space in front of the garage, garage at each garage door location. So then, just real quick, I'll just kind of reiterate, but back to the, which I've already kind of hit on, the pedestrian access, coming down the shoulders, connecting to a walkway, and then to the cart path, crosswalk across Quiniquissette, which connects to the overall Willow Bend Golf Club and other amenities, et cetera, so either by, you know, walking or by golf cart access, that connection is provided. The other thing which I do want to mention is, within each of these footprints, you have the garage bay, right, for a standard vehicle, but then also, that back little appendage on each of the building footprints, which you'll see on the architectural floor plans, but that's a golf cart bay, so you can have a golf cart at your unit, and then, you know, once you're there, that's pretty much, you're getting around via your golf cart or walking. If we could go to sheet 4.0, Mary, it'll be probably about three sheets ahead.
4.1?
4.0. There you go. Great, thank you. So this is the grading and drainage plan, one half of it, there's two sheets of it, but this'll give you the, you know, general idea of what's going on, and this has the bulk of the information on it. But the stormwater management system, you know, we've gone through a very significant design for this, following the MASHB zoning ordinance requirements and MAST DEP stormwater policy. The overall stormwater and drainage system consists of catch basin system, so there's catch basins in the road system here, and then at the bottom end of the, of the road as well, that then those tie in and discharge to four bays. We also have four bays along the backs of the homes located on the westerly side. We have vegetative buffer strips, again, multiple four bays here, large four bay here, and then again, the individual four bays at the rear of the houses. And then we have an overall wet pond, which is the wetland area, so it's unaltered, so it's functioning like it's functioning currently, but we're just going through the stormwater policy, and I'll, again, hit on a couple of highlights as far as some of the improvements. The stormwater design, again, meets the MAST DEP stormwater policy. We're controlling the two, the 10, the 25, and the 100-year storms to pre-development levels or existing condition levels for runoff. Water quality is met and exceeded, both TSS removal greater than 80%, water recharge is provided as required, and one point that I wanted to note is, existing Quiniquissette Ave, we don't have to go back to the sheet, Mary, but I'll just, if you're on the existing conditions plan, if you look at it, you'll see, you know, the wetland system, and you can see it here, the wetland system comes up very close to Quiniquissette here. Quiniquissette is currently the runoff off the road, it's just going into that wetland, it's untreated, unmanaged, et cetera. So what we've done as part of this proposal is, we're, you know, picking up that runoff from Quiniquissette that comes across here, and we're putting it through two four bays, and so we're actually treating that, a portion of Quiniquissette that comes into the site, we're providing water quality treatment for it, for the, a little bit better than the first three-quarters inch of runoff, which is, it was referred to as the first flush. So that's a, that's a significant benefit that this project's providing that currently doesn't exist on that road. Also, during plan review, Catherine Laurent, Director of DPW, had asked us to add some Cape Cod berm, which is, again, just an edge treatment to the road that currently doesn't exist on Quiniquissette, you know, just along our frontage section here, where we're going to be doing the entrance work and so forth, and we have, Willow Bend has agreed to do that. So again, it's another improvement to the, to the road.
Can you tell me what a four bay is?
Yeah, I mean, a four bay is basically, it's a, you know, vegetated depression that the runoff enters into, and then it allows the water to pond and attenuate and slow down, right, so your velocities are down to, you know, near zero, and it allows particulates, et cetera, to settle out, and that's, it's a water quality aspect. And then, as the water reaches a certain elevation, it will then overflow over the, you know, weirs, and it continues on downstream. So it's providing water quality treatment in a train system, if you will, from, you know, catch basins to vegetated swales and buffer strip areas, to then to your four bays, multiple four bays, and then ultimately to the, to the wet pond, and then discharges downstream.
And so you said there were four...
Matt, Chairman?
Yes, go ahead, Ed.
The, the, the actual term is sediment four bay, so it's, it's very commonly, you know, called a four bay, just as a common term, but the term is a sediment four bay, there to treat incoming sediment from the stormwater, whatever sediment might be in the stormwater. It's a best management practice that is generally desirable before final detention or wet pond reception of the stormwater into the wet pond as currently designed, as we see here.
Okay, so it's kind of like a before bay, right? Okay, now I get why there's a C in there.
It definitely is a before bay, correct.
And there are four of them on...
There's actually, there's multiple, there's, there's a one here, which is a larger one, then there's an even larger one here, and then over here, there's one, two, three, and then four, if you look at another sheet, there's another, probably a couple there. I think there's, off the top of my head, it's five or six along here, so, I mean, so we've really, I mean, there was a lot of effort put into really addressing the overall runoff water quality, how it was handled, and, and I'll kind of hit on some of these points as I, as I wrap up on the presentation, but the, the improvements actually to, to water quality that's going to occur by this project, I know it sometimes might seem a little counterintuitive, hey, you're developing something, you're doing, how is, how are you actually doing some improvements? And I'll, I'll kind of highlight those, but overall, you know, I believe this is providing a, an environmental benefit, and when I get into the mitigation discussion, and I don't want to put words in his mouth, but Drew McManus, the Conservation Agent, he and I have met several times on this, we've met informally with Conservation as well, and he agrees that, you know, the overall, with the mitigation and the taking offline of the active bogs, mitigation that we're providing, which is over two times the wetland impact and the quality of those wetlands and so forth, that it's going to be, it's an overall benefit to the environmental system out there, but again, I'll hit on that in a little bit. So I think, on, just from the drainage, stormwater management area, that was all I was going to hit on, unless there was any other questions that you had.
I do have a question.
Yep.
I did watch the, the informal discussion that you had...
Yep.
With the, before the ConCon, and one member talked about excess water on Quiniquissette Avenue. So I'm wondering, are, is this plan going to draw water off of Quiniquissette Avenue more than...
No, not anymore, I mean, right now, Quiniquissette Ave, if you go out there and watch it during a rainfall, you know, there's kind of a, the high point of the road is, you know, a little bit to the west, if you will, left on the plan sheet, and then to the right of the plan sheet, you know, to the east, it drains down, it runs down the road, there's no drainage on that section of Quiniquissette, there's no real edge treatment, so it's, you know, it goes along the edge of the road, it probably gets off the edge of the road in some areas, you get some erosion, you get sediment getting pilped up, you know, and then just the materials that come off of the road on any, you know, rainfall event, and then that's, currently comes down and it sheet flows, this is, this is the low area right here on Quiniquissette, and so it all sheet flows across and off of Quiniquissette, and then enters into this wetland system and continues downstream. So that's what it's currently doing. So with what we're proposed, that area that's currently coming off of Quiniquissette, we're picking it up, and we're running it through these four bays to treat it from a water quality standpoint before it continues downstream. So again, that's a benefit that's being added by this project that doesn't currently exist for that runoff.
So how do you channel it into that area?
So this area right here, it's right now, like, you know, if we're looking at the existing conditions, it just sheet flows straight across.
Okay.
So now, with this proposal here, that's the cart path, you'll see with the elevations here, there's like a little bit of a swell area here, which actually, I don't even account for that, but that actually helps, because you have a swell area that helps velocities, you know, be slower, you get some, you actually get some attenuation and some settlement out there. It then comes through this pipe, this is an 18-inch pipe that we're proposing, and into that four bay. This four bay, the way this one specifically acts is, as that water, depending on the amount of rainfall, as that water builds up in that four bay, it ponds up, and then it will, it's, the volume in there is provided, meeting the water quality volume requirements of the stormwater policy, and then overflows as this kind of riprap we are here, overflows that, goes downstream, so it'll go through more vegetative... weir here. It overflows that, goes downstream, so it'll go through more vegetative treatment here, just by running across vegetation, and then enters this second four bay. And then that four bay acts in the same manner as this one does, just a little bit larger. Again, ponds helps with water quality and then overflows these weirs, just as all the weir is, it's just a stone weir, so it's a stone level, gets up to it, the water, and flows over it. And that's, that's how the flow is attenuated, sediments are settled out, et cetera, and then that continues on downstream as it does currently, just has some, the additional treatment.
And that large four bay-
This one here?
The, the lower one.
This one, yep.
That's vegetated, right?
Yep.
And just for everybody that's here, what's a, what's a riprap?
Riprap is just stone. So all it is is just natural stone, and it's just, it's put at the, you know, outfalls or pipe or wherever you're going to have some type of concentrated flow. And it just, yeah, so it slows the velocity down, no, it slows the water down so that it's not an erosive velocity, and it keeps the area stable and it stops from sediment from getting picked up by the stormwater runoff and bringing it downstream. So if we're good there, could we go to 5.0? Again, that should be probably another two or three sheets.
It's the last sheet.
There you go. Great, thank you. So this is the utility plan. Again, there's a match line, there's two sheets, but this is, you know, will show you, you know, what I'm going to be referring to in the description here. So we're obviously extending water, public water into the development. We're providing two fire hydrants. On the plans before you right now, only have the one fire hydrant at the end of the road. There is an existing second hydrant that's on Quiniquisette that sits right about here. And when we were going through with plan review, the fire chief said he, you know, he said he'd like to, you know, possibly consider a second hydrant, but he said he was going to get back to us. He was going to look at that. And he said, you know, that might be sufficient, but we agreed at plan review that, we said, you know, you don't have to look back at it. We will provide a second hydrant at the entrance. That way, if they come in, again, let's hope that it's never needed, but if they come in and they need it, when they connect to that hydrant, they drop a hose, and now you don't have a hose going across Quiniquisette, which would, if the fire department was there and it was across Quiniquisette, you'd have to stop traffic at Quiniquisette. So we'll be adding a second hydrant at the entrance, you know, at the request of-
So it's not shown on this?
Fire Department, but it's not on that plan set there. That just was a comment just from plan review on last Tuesday?
It was last Tuesday. I wasn't there, but it was last Tuesday.
And obviously, you guys already had the plans submitted, you know, prior to that, so. Then a significant part of this project is the extension of the Willabend wastewater sewer collection system. So we'll be extending over here, this is an existing wastewater pump that pumps up to the treatment plant that's up kind of closer to Sampson's Mill. We're going to be extending gravity line and, to that existing pump and wet well. And so gravity line will come up this section of Quiniquisette and then into the project here. And so this entire project is obviously going to be connected to the Willabend wastewater treatment plant. And something that's kind of important to note, and again, it would might seem counterintuitive when you hear it, but this project with 14 homes at three bedrooms each, connected to the wastewater treatment plant, will actually have less nitrogen that goes into the groundwater than if the existing lot was, was not brought into Willabend and it was just subdivided as individual lots, because you could do, we could definitely get two lots, we might even be able to get three lots. It has enough area or frontage, but even at two lots with, you know, a four-bedroom home on just a standard Title V system, you'd actually, those would create more nitrogen than this system connected to the wastewater treatment plant. So again, it's a, it's a benefit by bringing this into the special permit and connecting it to the Willabend system, so. As far as overhead electric and communication services, obviously, it's overhead on Quiniquisette, but then everything brought into the project will be brought in underground, you know, from an aesthetic standpoint. And then natural gas will be brought in as well, which is available out at the, at the frontage. So then the next, I just wanted to kind of, I'm going to expound a little bit on the description on the golf amenity. Mary, if you don't mind, could you go to-
Wait, so wait, so you, natural gas?
Yep.
The, the electricity is overhead on the street?
Overhead on the street, yep. But then brought in-
Underground.
Yeah, it's brought in underground here and then feeds into the system. So yeah, it's all underground, yep.
And it's a private wastewater treatment facility?
Yep.
Okay, so what, what's-
6.0, please. So I think two sheets ahead. There you go, great. So what you're looking at here is what I'm referring to as the master mitigation plan. So as we've been talking about here, and I've got some, you know, color shadings here, this green area here is the golf course amenity area, which constitutes the majority of the wetland fill and impact. Based on the design, and again, many meetings over the past year, I'm going to say, with the conservation agent, and then again, the informal meeting with the Conservation Commission, we've come up with a plan for mitigating this area. Now, just to kind of, as a reminder of what I had stated earlier, this area that we're filling was a prior bog that's just kind of converted. So it's still, it's a, you know, as far as Wetlands Protection Act and conservation, it's a wetland, it's looked at as a wetland, and it's the same. But just, kind of just thinking about it from a practical standpoint, think about the, the environmental benefits and so forth. I mean, this area is, you know, right adjacent to the, you know, Quiniquisette Road. The runoff off of Quiniquisette is currently going into it, et cetera, and those all, those impact the wetland systems, impact habitat, et cetera, right, for, for wildlife and so forth. So, you know, just kind of keeping that in mind. So we're filling that area. The, the wetland mitigation that we're then proposing for this overall project is the taking offline of the active bogs, one, two, and three. So you would be getting rid of the active bog use. Those areas will then be restored to a natural wetland system. Those areas constitute over two and a half acres. That's over two times the amount of wetland impact that the project is providing. And then again, kind of to the point of what I was making where the fill for the golf amenity is, these bogs, especially bog one and two, those are on Quaker Run, those are on the stream system. So the restoration of these areas from both a water quality standpoint and a habitat standpoint is, is really pretty significant. I mean, you can, if you look up into, there's all kinds of research. If you just go onto Google and look at cranberry bog restoration, and then it hits on what cranberry bogs do when they're active in the restoration of them. In the states, you know, there's active programs that the state is, you know, working, you know, performing. Actually, you know, in Mashpee, you guys are actually doing one now, or in the process of permitting it, I believe. But the, you know, the removal of the cranberry bog is a significant environmental benefit. You know, cranberry bogs, just in, in of itself, a cranberry bog releases nitrogen and phosphorus, just the activity of the bog itself. And then of, you know, obviously, the use of pesticides and fertilizers in the cranberry bugs. I mean, that's still allowed. I mean, that's, as a cranberry farmer, it's an agricultural use, so there's a lot of exemptions that come along with that, that they're allowed, and that's what occurs. And that's in, again, I mean, in these, in this system here, that's Quaker Run, and that then continues downstream into Shoestring Bay. So the removal of these bogs and the restoration of those at over a factor of two times the impact area, which is an impact area up adjacent to Quiniquisette, to the existing road, really provides a, an environmental benefit. And again, I think I started to say earlier, I don't want to put words in Drew's mouth, Drew is the conservation agent, but he and I, we've discussed it. I believe he's even said it on record, but, and I, you know, and I think the commission was in agreement as well, that, you know, what we're providing here for this mitigation aspect, for the impact that's being proposed by this project, is a net benefit to the environment.
So Drew did send me something. I forget when you went there.
We were there in November, I think it was?
And he had this, it was this plan, oh, dot and all. It was like red, it had like, it had like the area that was already disturbed in red, outlined in red.
Yeah, that was, yeah, what we, yep. It was just an outline. I mean, all that was, was on the, the existing conditions plan. If you look at that existing conditions plan, you'll see the line of existing disturbed area. That's what I think you're referring to, Mary. That was highlighted.
Like this?
Yes, yep.
Right?
Yep.
Did you give that to the planning board?
No.
These ones?
No, that was just an, that was just part of the informal, that's, I mean, that information is all in there. It's just not, that line isn't highlighted. It's, that is the, if you actually look at the master layout plan, you'll see that red line, you'll see the, it's not red, but you'll see the tree, it's kind of the existing clearing and disturbed line. That's in that set. Yeah, so all the information's in that set. It's just not highlighted like what you see there.
All right. And how, how much square footage is that?
I don't know off the top of my head, Mary.
Okay, no. I'll add it to my question.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Was it, okay. Just trying to think where I left off here. So we're talking about, you know, it's over two times the amount of mitigation area, what the cranberry bogs are doing. And then so again, the, you know, the restoration of these areas is, you know, both from a water quality standpoint and a, and a wildlife habitat standpoint, is going to be a significant improvement to the environment there. Yep, and I hit on those notes there that I had, so.
And how do, why don't you just, how do you restore bog? How is that done? Just so people-
Yeah, the, so what will happen is you'll go in, you actually do some excavation. So it'll look, it'll look rough while it's happening, but you actually go in and you excavate out, because over time, there, as they're adding sand to the bogs, there's sand fill on top of the natural peat that are in these systems. So you go in, you remove that sand, you move it around, and you create kind of highs and lows to create a natural system so that you have, you know, there's some, you know, humps in it, and then there's some low areas, so that it's, you have areas just of natural, you know, wetland that, you know, attenuate the flow, will slow the flow down. You have all the channels that are out there. Those will be filled and be, you know, just-
You don't take the sand away, you, you move it around and stuff.
You move it around, right. It'll be naturally graded. You have, right now, Quaker Run, running through the bogs, is running, you know, it's a fairly straight line, right? Because it's a channel. I mean, they've modified it as the cranberry bogs to a channel. That will get altered, so you'll now end up with a meandering, you know, stream system like you would have in a natural, natural wetland system. I mean, if you wanted to, Mary, on the, the thumb drive, is another folder that had some pictures, if you wanted to see them, that I used for the informal presentation to conservation. But, and all it was, it just showed kind of before and afters on, obviously not this system, because it's not done, but, you know, what a cranberry bog system looks like and then a restoration of it. And there, you know, these are, you know, restorations that are occurring, you know, throughout Massachusetts, so the pictures are up there. I think there were, I don't know if there were, if it was Tidmarsh Project, but again, just, you know, the restoration of what the system will look like from the bog to then the natural system. It's, you know, it's-
It's a significant undertaking, too. It's not just-
There's-
Tell the farmer to stop growing and you walk away. I mean, it's-
Yeah, there's some-
It's a very significant undertaking.
Right, so you said, right now, the, the river goes through a channel, a straight channel that was cut.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. So, you know, so again, it'll, it'll restore it. So when it's done, and then, you know, it takes a, you know, a couple of years for things to, you know, start to grow and do its thing. It's not like, you know, it happens like that. But then it'll, it restores itself to, you know, it's going to be like a natural, you know, wetland system like it once was. That, you know, again, just, I mean, from the water quality standpoint and the habitat standpoint, it's, it's really going to be a significant benefit. I mean, again, just example, you know, the project that the town is currently undertaking to remove some bogs and restore them to natural resource areas.
How would, how, how would people determine when it's done? When you say it's done?
Well, the construction, I mean, you know, there'll be, the construction work will be done, you know, will be completed. And then obviously, like any site, right, anytime you see any construction activity on any site, it takes, you have to, you know, the vegetation has to grow, right, and it has to be established. So, you know, the vegetation doesn't grow in one day. I mean, so it's a, you know, but it's probably, I mean, within a, within a, you know, a growing season, you'd absolutely notice the difference. And then, you know, probably within a couple, it's, you know, you know, very significant, noticeable difference, you know, wetland resource area that's been established, that's been reestablished.
Could I ask you?
Yeah, absolutely.
Looking at the C6.
Yep.
Everything on the left here is a bog going back to wetland. I just want to, I've never seen anything like this, so I'd like to understand it. Do you have the color? Yeah, I do, yes.
So everything, everything on the left here, yeah, that's all, these are all, that's a bog. This is a bog. That's a bog. And then this area in red that you see, that's not part of the project. I just included it because as we go through conservation and just working through everything, this was an alternate area that we're not planning on using, but I just showed that there is a, is a potential, just from a master mitigation plan. But those are all, all those areas are-
That's going back to wetland, too.
This, these three green areas right here, this area here, this, and this, and those three areas combined to over two and a half acres.
Okay, well, what, you're not, you're not involved in the red here?
No, that was just, that's an, that would have been an alternate, if we're, as we go through conservation and so forth, if there was some modifications.
The top green one.
Yep, so that's button if-
You say that's going to be a golf course, but right now-
Which, this, this-
The golf, um-
This right here?
Golf, shipping.
If you-
A golf amenity.
If you look up on the, on the screen, that green, that, this green shaded area here, yeah.
Yeah.
So that, you know, darker green, I'll call that, that's the, that's the golf course area. This area here, these lighter green here and here are the, are the mitigation areas.
But right now, that's wetland.
Right now, they're bogs, they're active bogs.
This is a bog here at the top?
Oh, this here? No, this is a, that, this area here, the, the, on the, that area? That's, that is a wetland right now, yes.
Okay.
That we're filling.
And you're making it into a golf course.
That will be, yes, that's the impact area. It's a little bit under an acre of impact. And then the wetland, you know, the bog mitigation, you know, taking the bogs offline and mitigating, that's over two and a half acres. So it's about, you know, it's about two and a half acre, two and a half times.
So it's an actual wetland that's being impacted, whereas the red on this map-
Is going back to wetland.
Is the buffer that's being impacted.
The red. The-
I'm looking at the shading key on this map.
Yep, yeah, those are just, those are buffer areas. So, so-
That's a buffer area, but this, this, there is actually an area that you have marked as wetland.
Wetland fill, correct.
So that's, that's wetland that you're actually going to touch.
You're going, that's correct. And it's that, that wetland that we're touching, again, just from a clarification standpoint, it is a wetland, absolutely. It's a wetland under the definitions of the Wetlands Protection Act, as far as our conservation looks at it. But again, just to kind of point out, that wetland area that we're filling is an old bog, and it's adjacent to the road, to Quiniquisette.
What are you giving mitigation for this?
Yeah, over two and a half times. So again, we're impacting a little bit less than an acre, and we're going to provide two and a half acres elsewhere of mitigation and restoration of wetland systems. I mean, so it's a, it's a win.
Sounds like a good thing.
You know, it's a-
Plus you're putting those four bays in.
I'm sorry?
Plus you're putting the four bays in.
Yeah, I mean, the water, absolutely right, the water quality. I mean, you know, so ju, right, just real quick, I mean, because I kind of had a couple of points, just to kind of, I was going to wrap up, but it's kind of good segue to it, is everything we just talked about, you know, so we have the elimination of the existing septic system that's on the existing house right now.
Yeah.
We're tying everything into the wastewater treatment plant for Willabend, so it's a, that's going to reduce nitrogen from a wastewater standpoint. As we just have been talking, we're restoring over two and a half acres of bog to natural wetlands, and all the benefits that go along with that, that we just talked about. And then we're providing the water quality treatment, not just for the project that's being, you know, the proposed work, but for the existing Quiniquisette road, we're providing water quality treatment that doesn't currently exist. And that road's running right into the wetland right now. And again, just as a-
Are you building an asphalt berm along Quiniquisette?
That, we're going to, there's going to be a Cape Cod berm edge that the D P W director had requested us to add as part of this project. You know, so that, we'll, I'll work with Catherine on that. She was saying that, you know, she wasn't asking for the full length of the frontage, it was more kind of in the area of this entrance and along here. And that's, you know, that's, this is right about where the low area on Quiniquisette is. So, you know, we create this edge treatment here, and that'll just help keep the, you know, the edge of the road stabilized. And again, just, you know, the edge of the road stabilized. And again, just, you know, that's even a benefit in a way that it, it stops the, you know, erosion along the side of Quiniquisit, that, you know, that sediment ends up downstream is when you have storm events. So that was, that's the end of my presentation, and again, happy to answer any more questions that you have.
Okay, we're going to start with Dennis.
Okay.
First of all, looking at like, C3, you got the 100-foot buffer zone and the 50-foot buffer zone going through all the houses. So I don't understand how you could put a house where a buffer zone is.
Well, that's part of the conservation filing. We have, we've gone through impact analysis for not just the impact to the wetlands, but for the impact for the buffers, because you're allowed to do work within the buffer areas. And we mitigate for them. And so that mitigation that we're providing is providing mitigation for both the direct wetland impact, the area that we're filling of the wetland for that, that golf area, the golf amenity area, but also for the buffer areas, Dennis. So that the impact to the, you know, the buffer is just a, it's not the resource itself. It's a, it's a distance of, you know, it's a hundred foot from a wetland system that falls under the Wetlands Protection Act and conservation jurisdiction. So if you're doing any activity in that, it's an upland area, but it's a, it's a vegetated buffer to the resource area. If you're doing activity in there, there's mitigation that you provide for that as well. And that's part of that overall two and a half acres that we're providing mitigation.
Why don't you just show the lines, the 50-foot line?
And the 100-foot line.
And that, yeah.
The 50-foot line, I'm going to do the best I can from this distance here. The 50-foot line is about here, right?
Doesn't it swing in?
And then that's the 100-foot line here. That's on the Quaker Run side, if you will.
Wait, no, the, the 50-foot line swings in.
It kind of goes over...
Well, it swings...
Cottage seven.
It swings in and it, it goes over the houses.
Yeah, and then, yeah, and then you actually have, because you then have this wetland system here, you have the 50 comes back around here, and then there is the 100 right there. So that's kind of what you were talking about before, Mary, that, you know, you have the 100-foot buffer from the, from the west side and the 100-foot buffer from the isolated wetland east side that kind of converge on each other, right? And it kind of creates a via.
Madam Chair, I just drew the 50-foot buffer on the, on the east side.
Okay. So can you do the 50-foot buffer on the other side?
I think so.
I thought I did it. I'm going to...
Pass car to the houses already.
Right.
So the 50-foot buffer on the west side is this line along here.
Right here, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, this side, the 50-foot buffer goes through the houses. On the other side, oop, you missed it. It does go through cottage...
Seven.
Six and seven and touches the garage of cottage.
Yeah. And it, and it comes around it, but, you know, I mean, a function of that buffer down here is the, is the bog areas. So it's, it's an offset of the bog.
And then, then you have a 100-foot buffer, which is that line pushed over.
50 feet more, right, correct.
And then you have a 200-foot repair.
Right, parion, which is only on the west side, because that's off of Quaker Run. And then, but something else, just to kind of be aware of, and it's part of the filing and information with conservation and so forth, is those areas within that 50-foot buffer and the 100-foot buffer, there's a good portion of that, and that was that red line you were referring to, Mary, that, that's already disturbed and impacted.
Okay. Another question. How does the fire truck turn around? If it goes down there?
If you go to sheet, let's see, the 3.1 or 3.2, there's a turning template plan?
I don't see no T.
Yeah, so the next one, I believe, no, keep going, sorry, Mary, 3.3 maybe? It's, no, that's site distance 3.4, there you go.
All right, so it's 3.4.
So if you look, this, the line work on this plan is, we use what's called, you know, I'll call it auto turn for lack of a better description. It's a software that's used. And we've created the turning radii information for the Mashpee Tower truck, which is what you see in the lower right-hand corner of the plan. That's kind of just the standard template for the truck. And then this just shows the access in getting into the site, you know, clearing by the gatehouse, et cetera, and then coming in and then pulling into the T, backing out and then exiting out. And we've reviewed that with the fire department, and they were, you know, concurred with that.
Okay. Another question. If I say I have cottage 12, I own that. I own cottage 12, and I have a birthday party. Where do the people park, the extra parking? If they park on that 90-foot wide road and a fire truck comes down, they're in trouble.
You do, I mean... You only have about two people at your party anyway.
You don't know Dennis' spark.
Right.
A daughter's birthday party, 200 people, 10-year-old.
200, no.
All the friends, the friends, it was horrible.
But, but there is, you know, I mean, you know, the shoulder areas do provide for some additional parking, but to your point, Dennis, and Jack, maybe you could speak to it as well, but...
Yeah, there's a lot, I mean, you could show, but the main, you see that right there?
Yep, let me, let me just talk it through real quick. So across the street is the clubhouse parking lot. It's a very large parking lot. Even in the, in the middle of the summer, I've never seen it full. But regardless, there is, there's additional parking there that, part of this, the discussion that, you know, Willabend with the, you know, the homeowners association that's created for this area, that they, you know, if you had something like that where you expected that you're going to have a lot of cars, they would coordinate with Willabend, and they can use that, that parking area. And it's literally right across the street.
Yeah, it's, it's...
One more thing that, that bugs me. On cottage seven to cottage six, where the house is, you have like eight feet. Then you have a porch, and finally you have six feet. I'm just thinking of a car tractor coming in there with ladders and stuff. That's kind of tight.
Say that again? I'm sorry, Dennis.
On cottage seven.
Yeah.
At the corner of the house, going to the outside, to cottage six, you have, I think it was like eight feet.
Yep.
Then you have a porch built onto it, and that porch sticks...
Yeah, I mean, you can, yeah, I mean, you can get around that. We are, there's two areas, and that's why they're actually noted on the plan, because from a building code standpoint, you can build, you know, homes closer than 10 feet. But once you're at 10 feet or closer, there's, there's material construction that you do on the exterior of the building from a fire code standpoint.
Right, okay.
So there's only, there's two locations, which are just those, those, there's two little pinch points. We worked the best we could to try to keep it all in excess of 10 feet. We're going to, I'm going to reexamine it again, because I know we've all been talking about that. We talked about that at plan review, but, you know, so there's, there's a little bit of tweaking there that if we can get 10, we will. But there's only, there's two spots that are a little bit less than 10, which again, from a fire standpoint, an access standpoint, there's, there's not an issue with that, and the fire department was fine with that as well.
Not the fire truck. I was just thinking.
Get the personnel, yeah, right.
If there was a fire so close, the other houses, you know...
Right, and that's why, right, from a building code standpoint, if you're less than 10 feet, there's a specific construction that you do for the, for the structures, yeah.
All right, I ask my question.
All right, who wants to go next?
Go ahead, Mike, ask them a question.
When I have my birthday party, no.
I know, I know.
No, I'm, I'm good. I, I, I think most of the questions have been asked already from my perspective. I'm good.
Thank you.
Okay, on the, you know, 40-foot front setback.
Yep.
Where does this vegetative buffer go, and how many feet is it, and...
Well, that's, I mean, there'll have to be, we'll have to get into a landscape plan to augment the 40-foot off of Quiniquisit right now. We would be disturbing with grading, with the four bay, with the car path, and then re-vegetate it to create a, a nice landscape buffer.
Yeah.
So that's something that, you know, Willabend is...
That we could talk about later.
That we can talk about, yeah. And Willabend is, you know, working on that, and we can, if there's any, you know, minor tweaks that we need to make, we can, we can make those.
As I've driven by, there's nothing in the front. It's just stripped.
No.
Am I right?
Say, say that again?
You're looking at the wrong project.
Yeah, there's no...
We're talking about the other project?
Yeah, there's no activity out there on this project.
There is another project.
You're thinking of Willa Circle.
I've got that one in my mind, because I can see it, but this is further, that, further...
This is down the hill.
This is right across, you know, the main entrance into Willabend. It's right across from that.
I got it.
That Willa Circle.
And Willa Circle will be landscaped. I mean, it's under construction, but there's a landscape plan that was approved as part of that. And that's going to look consistent with what you otherwise see around the, the frontage areas of Willabend.
So actually, the four bays and what's said, that riprap, and there's one other thing, silt, silk seat, sink?
Well, there's silt sacks, there's silt fence, there's, those are all, silt sacks is just a, it's a geofabric bag, if you will, that goes into catch basins. Those are just elements that are put in during construction to capture sediment during the construction process. So you have silt sacks, the silt fence is...
The riprap, is that permanent?
Coilogs. The riprap is permanent, yep.
Riprap is permanent.
For the rocks.
Yep.
Slows down the water.
Correct.
And then the four bays, it's great. And is the pipe from, does it, where does the pipe on, by Quiniquisit, on the big, on the four bay up, up at the top?
Yeah.
Where does that pipe come in? I mean, how does it come in?
If you want to go to 4.0, I can kind of walk you through that. But just real quick, if you, if you're looking at the plan, the, so the water comes into that four bay from that pipe. It's, you know, think about the four bay as just, you know, a depression area, fills up to a certain level. They're relatively shallow. And then the water just overflows over that stone weir that we were talking about, the riprap weir. And that's what, how it continues downstream. So you have a pipe in, but there's not a pipe out. You do have some, in some of the four bays, you'll see some pipes that are actually low-flow orifices and outlets. And what that is, and we're using those where it makes sense, that's a perforated pipe that has stones surrounding it.
Uh huh.
That's actually below, that's actually below grade, so you don't actually see it. But the stone is at the surface, so it just allows these to, these four bays to de-water at a very, very slow rate. But now you, they've de-watered, so there's a combination.
Does that water that starts up there in that four bay on top, does it travel down into this narrow one?
Yeah, this, yep, the water here would then, you know, if it, you know, if you have a larger storm where that fills up, it then overtops over that weir and will run down here. Again, right, that's going across, you know, you get additional pretreatment from that, because it's going, my pointer's going out here. You know, it goes across a vegetated area here, a swell, a vegetated swell, and then into this second four-bay system, and then it operates the same way before it continues further downstream. So again, you have a, you know, you have a, a trained system of best management practices for water quality treatment for all this runoff.
Very good. It looks like, to my eye, is a very sophisticated system you're doing.
I'm sorry?
It looks like a very sophisticated system, the fact that you're saying it's nitrogen reduction.
Yeah, it was, it was, we put a lot of, we put a lot of effort into the, the design, for sure. It's...
There are, cannot be calculations now on how much less nitrogen will go into the bogs.
There, I, yeah, there's not a nitrogen calculation that was done from the, from the wastewater standpoint. I don't know if, where they were looking at that. I mean, again, it's, I mean, I guess it would be, it would be zero, because you got septic system that's putting nitrogen in the ground, and you have, now it's all getting piped to a wastewater treatment plant. So that would be very, very minimal. I can't, I don't...
Of course, you're, you're eliminating all the fertilizer in the two and a half acres of bogs.
But the nitrogen reduction, absolutely, from the bogs and so forth, I mean, it's...
Yeah, you don't have any cranberry bogs.
Right.
So I wonder, is ocean spray, cranberry sauce, is that something we shouldn't eat?
I'm not kidding.
Ooh, don't step into that one.
I can't comment.
I mean, I wonder if there's residual pesticides in it.
It just holds the shape of the can so well, though.
Yeah, there's nothing wrong with it, right?
I was thinking of the berry kind, the gelatinous kind. Wow, kind of ruining the cranberries now. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So, thank you. You described the wetlands resources. That was on my list. Let's see, is any of this work in the flood zone?
Nope. There's no, there's actually no 100-year flood plain on this, on the site. It's all, it's all what's identified on the flood maps as what is referred to as Zone X and Zone X shaded. Zone X shaded is a 500-year event, and then Zone X is no, no event at all, so.
Madam Chair, it's all just north of the zone of the 100-year flood plain.
Yeah, I think, can you pull up the, because I looked at it. I looked at FEMA's...
If, if you go to the existing conditions plan, I, you have the flood plain lines on there for the Zone X and Zone X shaded, but yeah, there's no, so they are identified on sheet 2.0.
You're going to explain this thing I'm going to show you.
Okay.
Maybe you can zoom in a little. So FEMA has a website. You can go in and put in an address. So what's that?
That, again, this isn't the standard FEMA map, but that's likely what I'm going to refer to as the Zone X shaded, which is actually a 500-year event. If you zoom out a little bit, you'll see down below, you'll see an AE elevation map. That's your 100-year flood plain, and that AE is, is flood zone A. The E means that they've calculated an elevation, and the flood elevation for the 100-year event is, I think I saw around, and it's 10, it's further down, yeah, there you go.
AE.
All right, so the...
Yeah, see down here? See the AE?
Yeah, okay.
AE 10, so that's, that's where you have the 100-year flood plain, and that's elevation 10. So yeah, so there's no, there's no flood plain, you know, on this site or even directly adjacent to the site. You know, 100-year flood plain.
All right.
You mentioned those two little cranberry bogs that were dug out.
Yep.
Are those, can those be vernal pools? I mean, haven't checked that yet.
Yeah, we're, we're going to be looking at that. We've talked about that with Drew. We're going to go through that with conservation. We've looked at them. We're, you know, fairly certain that they're not, but we have to look at them and, you know, at, around April 15th, we're going to do that in coordination with Drew.
No, I don't.
Years ago, I went around, there was a couple on your, you know, your property.
Yeah, no.
And, you know, and stuff.
But yeah, those will be looked at, and they currently are not, not, there is no mapped vernal pools on site by the state either, so.
Okay.
All right, so, yeah, so you're looking at that, the vernal pools.
Yep.
Yes, that's...
And we're doing that in coordination with conservation.
Don't you have to do that, like, at some time of the year?
Yeah.
I've got to be in this rain.
April 5th, you know, it's like around mid-April to, you know, probably beginning of June, so it's a time period.
And so in the master mitigation plan, the wetland impact area, did you say that was an acre?
The overall wetland impact is a little bit under, just about an acre, so a little bit under.
Okay.
Yep.
And so I would like to know, not tonight, but the square, right, the square footage of that area that we talked about that was kind of like red?
So the square footage of the existing kind of disturbed area?
Disturbed area.
Yep.
Yeah, and the air, the proposed disturbed area.
Okay.
If you could, would, you know, be patient with me and allow me to use those words. I know Ed's going to talk about the landscaping plan, which is pending. I think you already talked about low-impact development, right? So going to just ask you, is all the storm water on the site going to have some type of nutrient removal?
Yep.
And then if it's a really big flood, I mean, a big rainstorm?
Yep.
There's, there's other ways for that water to be managed?
Yeah, and it's all, right, so we've modeled through the 100-year storm.
Okay.
And modeled it through the site. And so, you know, from the lowest storm that DEP DEP has us look at, which is the two-year storm, and then up to the 100-year storm, which DEP doesn't even require us to control that, you just have to make sure you don't have an adverse possession, uh, adverse impact downstream.
Right.
But we still, we, and any predicate, do we look at all that, but that, the 100-year, the two, all the way up to the 100-year, we're controlling even the 100-year storm, so that the runoff leaving the site is less than what currently leaves the site.
Okay. Um, what I'd like to know is, um, and you don't have to tell me today unless you, unless, Jack, you have it off the top of your head, the number of, um, total bedrooms that you have already permitted?
Total bedrooms?
Bedrooms, and, I mean, and the proposed, which is addition of three times 14, right?
Right.
And those six, um, circle there, counted into this, is that a part of the, everybody of development?
Willoughby Circle is part of this special permit, that was a modification that went through this board, and-
They're getting 20 new housing on this property, all right.
Yep, so, um, Evan, Evan did a big research project, you probably helped him. These are all, this is the original special permit plus the, I don't know, 36 or 35 modifications?
Minus three or so.
So you're gonna get those other three, so, if you could help him?
We have them all, so we're happy to.
I'm sure you, you know, memorize them, right, okay. So these housing units, they're gonna be about 2,400 square feet?
Yeah, I mean, that's the structure footprint, is, yeah, that's the garage, you know, that's the, the footprint of the structure, that's not the square footage, so, you know, the, counting the, uh, the deck in the back, the structure in the garage, so the garage isn't living space here, so that's the total footprint of each, is around 2,400.
You know, I know they're not, the, the architect hasn't been at these yet, but what is your target interior square footage?
Dennis, do you know, I mean, the-
1808, I think it is.
Well, I think it's, it's probably first floor, and they could see, yeah, it's sort of 24, 23, 100, if you look, there was, the architectural has submitted, there's a second floor, obviously, right?
Okay.
That has, you know, it's smaller than the first floor, um, but I want to say the total, you know, living space of the buildings is probably in the 2,400 square foot range, just happens to be very similar to this, the footprint when you count the garage and all.
I thought I read that somewhere, all right.
Might be 20, yeah, 22 to 24 range, something like that.
Okay, so, we're in a housing crisis, are any of these units gonna be affordable, or have something linked to them that they have to be lived in year-round?
They'll all be for sale, none of them are gonna be designated as, as affordable, uh, you know, we, we have, in the past, on our recent approvals, you know, agreed to a, a small payment for each unit, I think it was a thousand dollars or something, we would certainly, you know, to the housing fund, certainly, you know-
That's a good idea.
Re-up that again here.
A thousand dollars, not gonna do it, if that's, if that's, if, if we say-
Well, there is no requirement.
No, I know, I know, I know, right.
He said, but he did say per unit, too, I don't know if, you know, so it would be 14,000.
Yeah, but that's, I mean, that affordability gap for a house right now is about 250,000, so I, you know, I work in that department, but anyway.
I understand, it's not a-
But if, if, I, I sat at this table when that happened, right? And what's kind of like your price range for these units?
I don't know that we, that we have that yet. Dennis, do you, uh?
We're in the process of developing the construction budgets now, based on, there's 14 different unit styles, I don't know if you have those, have the, pictures of that?
Well, will it be in excess of 1 million?
Yes.
Okay, so will it be in an excess of 2 million? So think about that for us, think about a range that narrows down, that, okay? Um, okay. There's Cape Cod commission decisions? Do you guys have those handy?
No.
Okay, all right, I'll keep looking.
Do we have, I mean, I can, I can get them for you, I don't have them here.
Yeah, if you could, the web, the, I was on their website today, but it's a little bit, if you could get that for us. Sorry, I'm, I'm going through the things that you've already answered, too. Okay, is this gonna go before any additional town boards, commissions, or committees?
Conservation, obviously, that I mentioned.
Need a road opening permit, obviously.
Yeah, but as far as going, I mean, as far as going to other boards or committees, I don't believe that it needs to, ZBA, it does not need to, we reviewed that at Plan Review, uh, Jack submitted an opinion letter, and I believe, you know, Commissioner Morris, you know, concurred at Plan Review, that it didn't need to go to ZBA.
Okay, and then, uh, for emergency response vehicles, you know, I'd like something written by the, uh, fire chief, it does, it can be a lot, uh, an email about, um, that he's happy with the hydrants and the, um-
Turn around.
The turns, yeah. I was looking at some stuff, and, um, are they're still active, are you still actively, um, testing the groundwater, wasn't there a monitoring, a groundwater monitoring program?
There was, many, many years ago, uh, that was done, it was referred to as the AUGAT-
Mm-hmm.
-site, uh, this, this area has been cleared and-
Okay.
-decommissioned, uh, there actually is one monitoring well still on the site, which we've been in contact with AUGAT about removing that, uh-
So that wasn't for nitrogen, it was for something else?
That was for, that was for real contamination.
It was a contamin, you know, it was a-
Where was the site, up by 28?
Yeah, it was, it's the, uh, Boston Interiors, what that used to be, that used to be an electronics manufacturing plant, they had a septic system-
Okay.
Solvents got into the groundwater, uh, but, and there was, uh, a cleanup, you know, that was done by AUGAT, they had, uh, groundwater treatment on our site, uh, and they got permission to decommission that because they reached drinking water standards, I want to say over a decade ago. I believe, um, they still, you know, the contamination moves slowly through the groundwater over the years, I believe they're still testing, it might even be over at Ktuit, you know, the plume, uh-
Wow.
At the very bottom, where it goes out to Shoestring Bay, but not on our property.
Okay, yeah, I didn't, I didn't, I just saw the, you know, the attachment, I didn't have time to read it. And, um, I don't think we, we report them on our agenda, um, your wastewater treatment facility tests, if you could, you know, give us a summary of, uh, unpro-
We can, we can give you the most, you know, recent, we have a, an operator on-site, six days a week that operates, that they provide-
Right.
-daily logs, and we have, I think, monthly reports, and-
That's just, just that monthly report, you know, we just-
The most recent monthly reporter, yeah.
Well, no, I mean, a summary of, of the last 12 months.
Okay.
And I think we're mostly looking at nitrogen, right? We just, I, it, is there any other element you're testing for besides nitrogen?
On a wastewater treatment plant?
Yeah.
Oh yeah, absolutely, they, they look at nitrogen, BOD, TSS.
Yep.
And those, that'll all be in a standard report on a wastewater treatment facility and operator, that's part of the testing that they do.
So I'm interested in the nitrogen, is there any other tests that people want the results for?
You test for-
It'll all be in the, it'll be in the sum, and the reports that they are required to do by DEP, that information will be in there, and that'll be the format that I would think that it will-
All right, so-
It'll look identical to the reports you get from South Cape Resort, or South Cape-
Yeah, yeah.
I don't want the reports, I just want a summary, you know what I mean?
Oh, that's what it is, isn't it?
All right, well, we'll get to like-
It's 12 months, just so we can hang our hat on that.
Five points was, uh, 10 points was, when nobody was there.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, that's life, you know, that's life, um-
CLF even agreed, of course, we got sued, like, the town of Barstool.
Oh, you did, oh.
We were in that, uh, uh, company of the town of Barstool, but CLF even agreed that, uh, there wasn't any, um, real possibility of improving the performance of our plant at the time in terms of increasing, uh, you know, the nitrogen removal, so.
And that it was, yeah, it's meeting and exceeding permit performance.
Exactly, yeah, yeah. But we still had to pay the illegal fees.
Okay, um, not at all, I forgot what I was gonna say. All right, so, I, I'm gonna go to Evan, and then to the, the engineer. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Is there any, Quaker Run was a pretty major routeway for the Native Americans, and you know why it's called Quaker Run? Because the, um, when the Puritans were going after the Quakers, the Native Americans had the Quakers come down, quake that river, get into the bay, and they went to Providence. So I'd like to know, I asked you before about, there may be any ancient roadways that we could just put us, if there are, you know, like we did before, several on it.
Right, there are none, uh, on this five acres, there are, uh, several in the area that are marked, and we can, we can provide that detail, but they are marked.
All right.
Okay, so now I'll go to our town planner, Evan Leir.
I actually don't have any questions for the applicant at this time.
Okay, um, Ed, Ed gave us a letter, do you want to go through it?
Yes, good evening, everybody. For the record, I'm Ed Pesci from Pesci Engineering, a consulting engineer for the planning board, um, Madam Chair, members of the board, um, I did have the opportunity to go through this letter in detail over the phone with Matt, Eddie, today. I, I would characterize our conversation as productive, and there were no issues whatsoever with, uh, Matt wanting to, um, respond and, and understand all the comments, is that a fair characterization, Matt?
Yeah, absolutely, and, you know, there'll be some, uh, minor revisions to the plans to address Ed's comments.
Right, so while I've, while I've got this, um, this sheet, um, shown, right here at the entrance, it'll take a second for it to show up-
Yep.
-is the, um, my, my comment number three, well, let me start with comment number one, I'm not gonna go through all of them, but I'll go through some of the highlights, which I think is important.
Yep.
Number one, of course, you all know, I, I make the point that this is a, a plan that's going to require a notice of intent, there's a lot of wetland alteration, I think they've done a, a great job in at least, um, you know, having a, a pre-application meeting with the conservation permission staff, uh, to go over what their intention was, and to talk about mitigation, I think that was all very positive, they're using, they're basically using the wetland resource area on the east side as a stormwater management system, um, you know, to help, um, address the way that stormwater works there, because it's currently uncontrolled, you're getting a little bit of benefit as well, as you mentioned, from, um, controlling some stormwater on Cliniquisit Ave, that's not currently, uh, treated or controlled. But as a result of all the work that they're doing, in the next, uh, I want to say rigorous review of, of the Wetland Protection Act, uh, compliance, uh, they may have a change in the plans, and there may be a revision of plans, and we'd obviously like to have a standard condition, I would recommend a standard condition that, uh, the applicant submit final plans to the board after going through that permitting process. But on to, uh, item number three, um, which I mentioned, um, about the fire department, I wasn't aware, after talking with, until talking with Matt today, that the fire department had given some initial comment about this, but, um, the area I circled on the map here is where the swept path analysis actually touches the concrete island, and I gave, uh, the comment about increasing the, uh, doing something about the geometry there, so it wouldn't touch it, to me, that's just too tight for the bumper of the, um, of the truck to, to, to get to it, it's a tough turn, um, and they just need to do something about, um, changing that geometry, and they're, they're willing to look at it, we already heard about the hydrant placement, uh, that's certainly being looked at, and, uh, Matt referenced already in his, in his review, or his introduction to the plan, that each side of the, the road, the road's relatively narrow for a two-way road, typically we'd want to see 24 feet, but we now have 18 feet, which is minimum for the fire truck access, but we also have seven and seven on either side, another 14 feet to, to utilize for emergency access, which is very beneficial, and I asked them to just prepare, uh, a construction detail to show how it would support a fire truck. I think we've heard a couple of things about, uh, the wastewater plant, my item number two talked about, um, uh, getting some documentation about, uh, how this additional flow, wastewater flow, we have, um, you know, another 42 bedrooms now going to that wastewater plant, that, 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 that flow would be handled by that wastewater plant, would be under their current permitting capacity, uh, I know that they've already done that, they just got to provide it for the record, I think it's important to have for the record. Yes, I did mention landscaping plan and a lighting plan, uh, I leave that to discretion of the board, uh, landscape plan, uh, will, uh, I, I know, may, may come at a later date, and I, and I certainly leave it to discretion of the board if there's a need for a lighting plan, uh, here, um, in, uh, in this private development, um, there's not, I believe, there's no proposed street lighting on the site, uh, so that may not necessarily be a, of, an issue to the board. Let me see, I, I did mention a couple of things in the stormwater, um, section that, Matt has no problem with addressing and taking care of, uh, Matt, there is one thing that, um, I noticed, if we can go, that while we're looking at this, and I meant to tell you today, and I completely forgot to do that, um, if we could go to the sheets under drainage, if we could go to sheet 4.0. Thank you, whoever's doing that, um, I'm just making the point that these pairs of, of catch basins are fairly close together, uh, for the amount of catch basins you have in the entire road, and you may want to take this pair and move them over here, but I'll leave that up to your discretion, I know you modeled it, with the flow coming off of Cliniquisit to the first set, and the flow all the way from the high point, which is approximately here, um, going to that set, but, uh, I just noticed it, that they're, they're almost atop of each other, and that might be something you might want to change, and, lastly, if we could go to, um, the mitigation sheet 6.0, um, when you obviously go to file a notice of intent, there is some buffer zone, um, that's not exactly shown, uh, 050 buffer zone is not shown, um, up in the, the, the front eastern center cottage, just so you could go to the 60, uh, 6.0 plan, please?
Oh, sorry.
I don't know who's driving, thank you.
It's Madam Chair.
Madam Chair is driving, right? So, so this, this color, the buffer impact, you know, you've got all kinds of buffer impact up in here, um, along the edge of this, so, you know, this is something you'll just have to add, I know you'll be dealing all with that, you know, looking at this really hard when you file your notice of intent, I just noticed that while we're studying this at length earlier tonight, but-
I found that confusing, too.
Yeah, and, I mean, that, that exhibit, it was just, and this has all been reviewed with Drew, that's just, you know, that's just a, a colored exhibit, I try to understand how it lands with the mitigation aspect, all of the buffer impacts and the wetland impacts were reviewed with Drew, and the mitigation aspects are being provided based on those, those buffer impacts, so.
Right, it does the job that you intended it to do, and that is to show what, um, mitigation is proposed, how the mitigation is proposed, um, and I think that's exactly the intention of this, so, um, you know, I, I, we, we wish you luck when you go through that process, we just want to get the final set of plans, if there are any alterations and changes.
Yep.
And subject to the questions, any questions, uh, that Madam Chair, you or the board members may have, that's all I have.
Um, yeah, I want to go back to item three. So 3A, we talk about, there, you say there's only one fire hydrant, you've added another fire hydrant to the system, okay. Ed, explain 3B again.
So it's, um, shown here that it's 16 feet wide with one foot Cape Cod berm on each side, so effectively you have an 18-foot wide travel way.
Okay.
Let's go to sheet, I want to say 3.1, just to kind of give everybody the, the explanation. There we go. So we only have 16 feet of, of travel way, but we effectively have a foot of Cape Cod berm around them, uh, on each side, so you have 18 feet, 18 feet is the minimum requirement, generally speaking, uh, under Massachusetts code, uh, the Massachusetts fire code to have for, uh, fire department access, there are some exceptions to that, but that's, that's pretty much what it's required. After we get past the sidewalk right here in front of Cottage 14, all along the side of the road, there's a seven-foot wide, um, shell, I've not drawn it perfectly, but shell, um, shoulder, which effectively allows for a larger than 18-foot wide access, which is very beneficial. So I think that's important, I think it's a great idea, it definitely improves the safety in case there's a car parked in the road, um, or for whatever reason, that the fire truck could get around it and use that shoulder. The shoulder needs to be reinforced, it's not just grass, needs to be reinforced, and, and Matt and his team intend to do that, they just haven't shown a construction detail for that, and I just wanted that they had a construction detail for that.
All right, okay. All right, and, um, 3C has to do with the entrance way, and I do kind of agree with the engineer to, to widen, um, to take his advice about the entrance area, the, um, that road is quick, is quick, and, um, people are gonna, we've, Dennis and I have always advocated for that.
For making the entrance width wider?
As our engineer-
What, well, what I'd like to do, because Ed, when you're referring to the, uh, the turning path for the tower and where it's going over the island, that's only the overhang, that's not the tires, so you have a, you know, you have a curb height, okay, of six inches, the overhang of the vehicle, so like, you know, the front of the vehicle where it's not the tires-
Correct.
That's just, that's- That's just, that's the only, that can travel.
It is the bumper overhang. You're absolutely right, Matt. I was just concerned that, that if you, if you zoom in on that sheet, there's just not a lot of room for error there.
We can actually, I can.
Like it's going to take out a part of the island.
Yeah, I'll take a look at that and, you know, you and I can discuss it and then I can discuss it with the fire chief as well. I mean, we want, you know, it's a, you want to provide the necessary width, but you also don't want to go excessive, right?
Our fire chief is not our engineer. So we're, so you don't even, yes. I, I'm going to go with what Ed says. So that's super important.
And I will review it with Ed and he and I will get on the same page.
Right. I know you guys always do.
I, I certainly respect the fire department's opinion on all of this. So I, I generally defer to the fire department on, on this as well. And I wasn't, and I, and I think, Madam Chair, you asked for some written comments. It could be emailed. That would be fine after we obviously get the revised plan. Would be good to have that in the record as well, that they accept the locations of the fire hydrants and they've already determined by looking at this that the swept path analysis was acceptable. I find it generally acceptable. I was just concerned about that entrance. It just, that's, if it's not taken perfectly, they're backing up into the road and it just doesn't leave a lot of room for, for error.
I'll review that with Ed and I'll make sure that Ed's comfortable. If we need to tweak it, we'll tweak it. So.
Anything you can do for that is good.
Okay.
Ed, if that's it, I'm going to go to the public. Is that okay?
Yes, Madam Chair, absolutely.
So anybody from the public, you can come up. There's a mic on, at our desk here so the project proponent doesn't have to leave. But if there's anybody from the public that would like to comment, I'm, I'm sure that the project proponent can, can grasp that I'm going to ask for, for this to be continued. There's too many, there's too, there would be, I mean, it would be a book, the conditions. So we're gonna, come on up and just say your name and address. And if you don't mind using that mic over there, that'd be great. They just look so comfy, you know?
Mike Ronhock, 104 DeRass Road. I have several questions and maybe you can clarify some of these. The first is for the permits. Now, they're asking for expansion of permits. There is, it says they have 287 was from the original application, the original, right? So where are those permits coming from? There's, there's, those permits were not built out, all of them?
I'm going to, I'm going to leave it to Jack. Why don't you give us the date of the original permit?
Original permit was in 1987 and it was, been modified, I think, 35 times. But the current permit, maximum permit count, which is derived based on the amount of overall open space in the project, is 287 permits. Of those 287, as of today, the planning board has, or its predecessors have approved 274. So we have 13 remaining permits under that overall cap, which we are proposing to utilize here. And then there was another permit, which was abandoned because somebody had two lots and put a pool on the second one and agreed they were never going to build on that lot.
Okay. So there's 13 permits available, but where does that land?
It could be used anywhere that the planning board authorizes it within the Willabend project.
Were they for specific lots?
It's, it's, no, it's not specific lots. It's not, it's within the overall Willabend special permit. So that, that overall exhibit that we showed at the very beginning back when this was all done, what they do, the way they derive that 287 allowed units is they, again, this would have been long before I was involved, but they go through and do a, basically like a gridded subdivision that, you know, using the current zoning, which would have been acre lot, I believe, and go through and say, okay, here's how many, here's what you can support for the number of units for that overall tract of area. So that's the 287. Then you go into, under the prior zoning, the cluster and multi-filmy zoning, I believe it was, and through a clustering aspect and then open, and then open space developments, you take all of those units and instead of putting them in this wide subdivision grid and sprawling, you cluster them so you can then now preserve open space. It's better for infrastructure. You, you know, you've got open space, environmental areas that are maintained. So that's the overall Willabend area. It's just, you know, you get that Willabend proper, you know, property line, if you will, and 287 units are allowed within that. Okay. So it's not like you have a specific, you know, lot that, hey, here's, here's 13 lots that didn't get built on and now they're going to be built on. They just, they have those 13 permits. But then like Jack was mentioning, just the way that the zoning reads, the addition of this, this land there, this lot, five acres, but say just, you know, three and a half acres of upland, we're not even requesting any additional units for the land that's being added because that's the way the zoning was written in 1985. That was the 1985 zoning, I believe, we're under. And so that, you're actually, that 287 cap is still being, you know, still holds and is being honored. You're not, you know, we're not getting any additional units by adding land, if you will.
Well, you, well, you are because you, you're adding that land to Willabend, which is in the, under the original permit.
But we're not getting any additional, we're not getting additional units.
No, but you could still, you still could do whatever you want on Willabend's property, but you're adding this property to Willabend and developing it. So you are adding land.
But we're not, we're adding land, but we're not adding.
That's not under the original permit.
But we're not adding units from what's allowed. So right now, let's just say.
Well, on that land, you are.
Yeah, but right now, let's say, if, and Jack.
Yeah, I understand.
But on that land, you are. But if I was to own that land, I could possibly put three houses on it.
Correct.
Which is, R3 is 40,000 square feet, right?
So you could.
So I could put four bedrooms. I could put 12 bedrooms. You own for 42 bedrooms on that property that is currently now only five bedrooms.
But you could potentially have these other 13 units elsewhere in Willabend plus, plus the three, plus the three lots there. So now you'd actually end up with, you know, more units.
17.
Yeah.
Point, point taken. Point taken.
Would that property be on the town sewer system?
I don't think so.
In their system.
No, I mean, if, if they didn't have it.
I don't think so.
Because they're going down.
I'll have to check. I'll have to check. But.
It wouldn't, but that's going down Mashpee Neck Road.
Right. And that's very close to there.
I'll have to, I'll have to check for you.
So the point of that is going to save anything for the town nitrogen-wise is not really true if that was going to already be on the town system.
Yeah, it's probably, yeah.
I don't think it is, but I will double check. I will double check.
You think it is on it or you think it is not?
I don't think it is.
You don't think it is?
But I will double check.
Okay.
Yeah.
So.
But I, I understand your point. I understand your point.
As far as parking, especially the narrow roads like that, you said you can use the roads across, you can use the parking lot across the street, right? And you're going to have 14 houses probably all have a golf cart. How are they going to cross Quiniquette safely?
They're going to use the existing.
The cart path, the cart path that I described, cart path from the development goes down to, connects to the existing cart path system. And then there's that, there's a crosswalk across Quiniquette, right at the main entrance to Will, to the Willabend Drive.
By that parking area?
I'm sorry?
Is it by that?
Yeah, it's near that parking area, yeah.
So that, so people crossing with golf carts, it's, you know, it's going to add to traffic to the road, but you've got a system to get across there?
Yep.
And then just come out the entrance and drive across?
Yep.
It's a dedicated, you know, crosswalk flagged, et cetera.
How old is that system?
The system?
Yeah. There's no lights. I don't think there's any lights.
Well, there is a light, there's a light up at the top of the hill. I can't recall. I don't think there's a light at the bottom.
It, it's ancient.
Yeah, it's 30 years old, probably.
Something like, if you go over by.
It's actually being upgraded as part of the roadwork that's being done on the sewer permit. We're going to repaint and re-stripe it all.
Could you put that in writing for us and tell us how?
It already is in writing.
It's in here?
No, it's with Mr. Jack.
Ray Jack. No, no, no. Right. No, could you give the planning board that information in writing? So you're, you're proposing to, to improve the pedestrian crossing?
Yes.
Right?
Yeah.
So if you, if you could give us a summary and, and.
Yeah, no, we're happy to do that.
Yep. I'm sorry if I didn't express it correctly.
The town's actually doing the work.
Oh.
Responsible for their crosswalk.
Well, we, we donated to the town the land for the pump station.
Right.
On Mashpee Neck Road. And as part of that, they agreed that they would clean up that area and also help us out with some other roadwork in that area while they were.
All right. So do you want to get that from Ray Jack for us?
Yeah.
Okay. They're office buddies, so I weave it in. Okay. All right. Yep. That was a really, I forgot that about the crosswalk. So thank you for bringing that up.
No problem. So I mean, the major concern in town right now is wastewater, obviously, and housing. So is their system, their wastewater system up to the same standard as the town system's going to be?
We're going to get their report. I think they're permitted to 10 units of nitrogen.
Yeah, we operate 105.
Okay. So we'll, we'll get, that's why I asked them for 12 months.
Right.
But yeah, generally, I mean, wastewater treatment plants to, you know, Willabends, the towns and so forth that goes through what's called the groundwater discharge permit program with DEP. And the permits, just from a nitrogen standpoint, the state limits are 10 milligrams per liter. And so that's the, that's the perm, that's the permit requirement on, I believe, I mean, to say every permit that DEP issues. And so yeah, Willabend is meeting that and exceeding that.
But do you guys target five?
We operate closer to five.
Five.
So in the, what's the situation with the, I know Mashpee and Bonneville and Willabend were named in a lawsuit for runoff and stuff. What?
The Conservation Law Foundation lawsuit? Did that get resolved?
Did you guys mitigate that?
Yeah, it's done. It's resolved, yeah.
It's, it's resolved?
Yeah.
It's a mystery. Can you share with us what you did?
Well, I mean, they, you know, they, it's, it's a long story. Maybe I'll defer to Evan on it, but it was a, I guess, a lawsuit against the two towns and there's been others against Witchmere Harbor and others who operate plants. And the allegations were never that these plants were not operating in accordance with their permits. The allegation was essentially that the DEP should never have authorized these permits because they constitute an indirect, an indirect discharge to Ktuit Bay because the water ultimately flows into the, into the bay and therefore they, they felt that the state had greater regulatory authority over this that they hadn't exercised.
But I'm saying, did Willabend make any changes or improvements because of that?
I mean, it was found.
It was, yeah. Good, good.
Well, I don't know. I mean, I wasn't involved in that, but I mean, from what you're saying, I mean, it was found that the, the plants and what they, what CLF was saying was not.
Right. It was.
Okay. So I, I thought that you had made some, you addressed something.
No, they never, no one ever alleged that our plant was not operating in complete compliance with its permit. It was more, you know, I, without characterizing it, but it was, it was, it was a policy-driven lawsuit to, I think, encourage the towns.
To lawsuit.
To, to, to put in public sewer throughout the Cape.
Anything else?
Yeah. As far as housing goes, I'm just curious. I know of another, it's a cluster subdivision right close to me. And when that was approved, they were required, one of the requirements was to give a lot for a habitat home. That was 14 lots, I believe. So this is similar.
And one in 10. It had to be affordable.
So what makes this different that makes it so they don't have to do that or make that a requirement or have them somehow do that? I mean, this is, these are million dollars plus, you're talking 14, 15 million dollars or more here. And no housing in the town. No one can, no one from town is going to buy these homes. What makes this different? Why, why that subdivision is a cluster subdivision just because they're not touching? These are common driveways, which you don't see that around here. I don't really think that's a, a wise choice. You have four cars trying to access a one common driveway, but you've got, you know, 14 units, all on a million plus and, you know, nothing. What's the benefit to the town, I'm asking? Where, I don't see the benefit to the town for this, to take a parcel of land that's surrounded by wetlands, modify it all. They've got plenty of land. They could build somewhere else where they don't have to modify wetlands. It's a, it's a, it's a very dense project. And I don't see the benefit to the town. I really don't. I don't see where this is giving something to the town of Mashpee or helping us in any way. And I would hope that the board would vote against this, but that's my opinion on it. And I'd like to see, you know, what, what have they got to do for the town?
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Can I, can I just, you know, respond to that? Fair, fair comments. It is an intense development. It's consistent with what's been done in, in the remainder of Willabend. I guess I, I would make two points. First, Willabend last year, in fiscal year 2022, the entire property paid over $3 million, $3 million to the town of Mashpee. We have eight schoolchildren, right? So I think everything has to be evaluated in terms of alternatives. If we put three lots there, you'd likely end up with more than eight schoolchildren.
Just on those three lots?
Just on those three lots. You would end up with three septic systems. You'd have more nitrate. You would not get the bog mitigation, et cetera. So, you know, we, you know, we recognize that this is, as I said, a, a intense compared to what could be done under today's zoning there. But I think we've also come forward with a pretty aggressive, innovative mitigation plan, which I think everyone will get. This is not a cheap plan to replicate two and a half acres of bog. So I do think there are benefits for the town. I, you know, I understand the housing issue and these are not, I, I agree, these are probably not, you know, housing for Mashpee residents. We are very anxious as a company to work with the town on workforce housing. I think everyone knows we bought the Santuitt Inn. We've converted that. We're upgrading that for workforce housing. And we'd love to work with the town on more workforce housing because it's a huge problem for us. And it's a huge problem for everyone in Mashpee. And, you know, we, we share the burdens of that. We want to be part of the solution on that. So just a comment, I, you know, I, I respect the, the perspective, but something is, is going to happen there. And I think what we're proposing is a, a proposal that could, you know, merits consideration and it's a, everything in life is a balance.
So, so just back of the envelope, it might, it might behoove you to give us, you know, the cost to renovate the bogs in general sense and your timeframe to have that done. I, I think we're going to continue this. So I, is there anybody else from the public that would like? Go ahead. Come.
Lynn Barbie, 73 Surf Drive. I generally like the concept of, of the cottages. It occurred to me, you could have 90 people living there and that would be really crowded because if you could have six people in each house. But what I really want to say is, have you considered putting solar on top of these? Because then that could also add to our grid.
I'm not sure.
Solar panels, is that part of your design? Solar panels, is that part of your design?
It is not currently.
Maybe you could try it. Any onsite energy generation? There's other forms.
The home that is going to be built to the latest energy conservation standards, I don't know, it's called HERS rating, Home Energy Rating System. All homes built in Massachusetts have to reach a certain score, that score is done by, basically the lower the score, the better.
Oh, you know what? You have to come up and use a mic. I am so sorry, sir. So, your name and your company and.
You can take the mic right out, out of that.
Oh, yep, you can come up and. Hi.
Hi, Dennis Ring of Southworth Development. So, the homes are being designed to the current Massachusetts Building Code, which has sets of requirements for energy efficiency in construction. There's a score that they have to reach, I always compare it to the yellow tag that you get on an appliance that says, you know, how much it's going to cost per year. So, the lower the score, the better. It's done with a number of things, windows that perform better, better insulation packages. The current electrical code and building code have been required. Every new building has to be outfitted with an outlet for a electric vehicle, so you get points for that, you get points for using more efficient equipment, more efficient furnaces.
I see.
Heat pumps, things like that.
So, the answer to onsite energy generation is no? Energy conservation, but not?
Energy conservation, yes.
Okay.
There's no current plans, there's a bunch of different ways to reach the HERS score. I mean, solar energy is not off the table, there's actually, I believe, there's a program where if you outfit the house with a certain minimal amount of solar panels, you get five points off your HERS score. So, we have to look at all of that to see, takes into the design of the house, the square footage of the house, the volume of the house, but there's a lot that goes into it. We actually have a, employ a sustainability director that helps us with initiatives like that.
So, are these homes condominiums?
They will be, yes.
They will be. So, are solar panels prohibited by your condominium docs?
No, I mean, not prohibited.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else from the public? Yeah?
I'm going to be really quick, thank you. I'm just going to be really brief, I know everyone's tired and probably hungry too, but I just wanted to have, I just had one question. Terry Ronhoff, 104 DeGrasse Road. I just had one question, and I just want to commend the board and all the other town officials. I mean, they've really, they've really done a lot and answered many of the questions that I had before even coming in here. But one of the questions that I did have, and I know that part of the, you know, the clean water issues that we have is from fertilization and, you know, that's a concern for us. And that golf amenity, I'm sure will be nice and lush and green there. And it looks like you have a before bay collection area right near that area, but the shape of that golf amenity and the location of that, I think it's before bay, am I saying that correctly? The collection area?
Yeah, there's a four bay area, yep.
If, I'm just concerned about the fertilization and I know that's a smaller area than the rest of the golf area, but if it could be designed so that, so that it was level, so it would run into that.
Yeah, the grading for that actually is done so that it does divert the runoff of that into that four bay area. And then additionally, I can't speak to the specifics of it, I don't know if Jack or Dennis can, but just from, you know, fertilizers and so forth, you know, that are for that golf amenity area and the, you know, the golf courses in Willabens, they use the best management practices for.
A lower nitrogen area.
Yeah.
Okay, the other question I had is, so are you intend to put a berm on Quiniquisid Ave right there?
I'm going to coordinate with Catherine Lorenz, she's the director of DPW. She's requested that we add a Cape Cod, when you say berm, you're talking about like a Cape Cod berm, edge treatment to the road, right? Not a landscape berm?
Right, along the edge of the road. So, I'm just visualizing it, so people in there, in that golf amenity area, or there'll be, that'll be a stone, that'll be a shell or whatever, so they can drive their golf carts along that area. So, it won't be visible from the road.
We're going to have to work on that with the landscape plan, I mean, so, you know, they'll be, we'll have to augment, you know, the landscaping through that area. I think, you know, that it will be visible to the road to a certain extent, but there can be an amount of screening that can be done too, if, you know, with, if it was evergreen vegetation and so forth, so that it can be made, you know, relatively, you know, non-visible, I would say.
Right, so I'm just, I just, if you put a big berm there, then you've taken away some of the benefit of draining the road into that.
Yeah, it's not, yeah, there's not going to be a berm, so there's two, it's not a landscape berm, like an earth berm. What we're referring to, that the DPW wants to see, the director, is a Cape Cod berm, it's just a very, it's a low, it's the edge of, it's asphalt, it's along the edge of roads. It's only like three inches high, and all that does, it's considered to be, we call it edge treatment, so that it just controls the runoff going along Quiniquisid so that it protects the edge of the paved road.
Oh, so keep the runoff into that before bay.
Right, and it protects the edge of the road so the road lasts longer, you know, if you see edges of road that don't have something like that, the edge of the road starts to break up and deteriorate over time because the water is running off the edge and it undermines it.
Right, so it pulls the water into that, okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I think we should do a site visit, what do you think?
Yeah, we're back to the egg, okay. Can I ask one thing?
Yes.
That's a wetland, that you, we could, beggar to the amenity.
Yep.
Yep.
So, there's water there all the time because it's a wetland?
No, there's not, there's not water there all the time. Actually, if you go out in that area right now, where that's being filled, there's probably no water there now, and in the summertime, there's definitely no water. No, a wetland's not, a wetland is not always wet. I mean, it's based on, you know, vegetation and soils, there's multiple parameters.
Oh, I was just going to ask, what, how would you run the water out of there, you know? But you said it's not always wet, so.
Correct, yep, yeah, and it runs, it's, you know, it does slope to it and it runs downstream just like the Quaker Run, like the stream does, right?
Right. Because I was thinking, if you put fertilizer on it and if there was water underneath it, the fertilizer may go right into the, you know, Quaker River and out into the, you know, out into the bay there. But you said there's not water there all the time, so.
Yeah, and we're, you know, capturing it through the four bays and so forth for the pretreatment for that, yep.
But two, with fertilizer, if you read the directions and use it properly, you don't really get a lot of that nitrogen going down unless you put it on like it rains the next day or something, you know, so.
Yeah, and again, I know, you know, the golf courses, you know, in Willabens, they use best management practices for, you know, fertilizing pesticides and it's also an expense too, right? They want to use as limited amount as possible, so.
Okay, go ahead, yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm looking at that, it's going to be the golf course, is, when that gets filled in to create a golf course and golf grass is put on it, you've got, got to put fertilizer on it, but that fertilizer will run into that four bay.
Yep.
Four bay number two. And, excuse me, I don't know why I'm always hoarse. The lot coverage is, was it 20% in 1987?
It was actually, I believe, there was no lot coverage in 1985 zoning, so the special, yeah, the special permit, and correct me if I'm wrong, Evan or Jack, the special permit for Willabens does not have a lot coverage requirement, actually.
Oh, so, because I was thinking, if it's 20%, you look like you're over the 20%.
We're actually, I calculated it though, just so that I had the information myself, but it's not a requirement of it, if you will. But the actually, for, and this is based on using only the upland area, so three and a half acres, not using all the five acres, just based on the upland area, the structures and the garages, so not counting the decks behind, but for the, you know, buildings and the garages, the lot coverage percentage is actually just under 20%. It was like 19.4% on the, yeah.
Is that standard?
I think that's funny math, but anyways.
No, no, I mean, but no, I mean, well, you know, the zoning, the zoning, like a few of, you know, current zoning today, the lot coverage definition in your zoning ordinance, and that's how, you know, many towns are, it's based on structure, it's not impervious coverage, it's based on structure, you know, the building footprint. So, the building footprint and the garage footprint.
Including the garage.
Including the garage, but not counting the deck behind, the patios, it doesn't count driveways and all of that, but the structures alone, it's 19.4%. Again, it comes out, you know, if you, it's like 20, not counting the deck, like I was saying, it's 2,400 square feet for the general footprint, that includes the deck. If it's not, you don't count the deck, it's around 2,100 square feet.
Oh, I guess we could figure it out too.
Times 14, and then, yeah, and you can do the math, you divide by three and a half for your acreage and it's, yep. And Mary, I did it too, I was actually pleasantly surprised when I, I was like, no, it's right in that range.
The site does seem tight, you know what I mean? The site really feels tight.
This, yep.
But anyways, so I think because of the way it looks, you know, I think that we should go and have a site visit.
Yeah.
I've lost Evan, but.
Sorry.
No, that's okay. So, I think we should arrange a site visit and invite, you know, the planning board members. I don't know if we can invite members of the public, I have, I have no idea how, no, just us, okay. So, I'd like to do that, I am, I have to say that, you know, I want to, I want to see where this, you know, pathway is going to be.
The golf cart path, you mean?
Yeah, you know, that road I never take in the summer because people speed on it, and I'm just a little concerned how close that is.
You just have to keep in mind too, because this is, you know, people think about this commonly, this way I'll say, is you have the traveled road on Quiniquisid, right, the pavement itself.
Right.
But then you have the right of way, the land that that road sits in. So, then that cart path is outside of that.
Yep.
Right of way. So, the cart path is probably, off the top of my head, I could, you know, I can check it, you know, back at the office, but it's probably, it's probably, you know, 15 to maybe 20 feet removed from the actual traveled edge of road. So, it's just because it's near the right of way, it's not actually near the pavement.
Right, and that's a drawing and, you know, there's lots of lines there, but I, you know. Yeah, so let's prepare that. We did get, we did get an email from Tom Fudala dated 2/26/23. I had, I, is this plan on the website?
Not yet, I'll put that tomorrow.
Okay, so the plan is going to be on the website, there's large plans in Evan's office. Do you, you have it set here?
Yes.
And we didn't unfold it, but there, I encourage people to look at them, especially, there's lots of information on these plans, and they're really good, they're really, they're well done, and the mitigation plan is very interesting. But anyway, so I sent, I sent out our packet to a couple of people, one of them was Tom Fudala, because I was on the weekend and the material was not on the website, so, anyways. So, he responds, Mary, the numbers work under their special permit, as does the addition of land to the permit area and will constitute the final build-out of units allowed under Willabens special permit. Similar adjustments to Willabens permit area has been done in the past. I do see one problem with the plan, though, if they are proposing this under the terms of the special permit and the old multifamily bylaw under which it was approved, then they have to follow all the rules applied to all of the properties under the permit. In this case, I am specifically referring to the special permit's requirement for a 40 or 50 foot, in parentheses, not having the permit available, I am not sure of it, end of parentheses, naturally vegetated buffer around, along Quiniquisid Avenue. If you view the plans for the rest of the project or just drive down Quiniquisid, you will see that the rest of the special permit project sections have this required buffer. The proposal shows a 40-foot building setback measured, measurement, which is sort of irrelevant under the special permit, but shows the required buffer area totally cleared, including a golf cart path running along Quiniquisid. This would have to be fixed for the proposed modification to be in compliance with the special permit. So, I think there was a little bit more communications with Tom about this?
I looked at the condition he was referencing because he was kind of pulling that out of his memory. Condition three of the original special permit required a minimum 100-foot buffer strip from either edge of Samson's Mill Road and Quiniquisid Avenue in its undisturbed naturally vegetative state. Also, I pulled up on the computer the 1985 zoning bylaw with the specific references in the multifamily zoning, if you wanted to review it, but it also says in the permit, in specific reference to section 9.3 of the zoning of 1985, that the minimum buffer area on perimeter portions of the development seeking approval under that section shall be 40 feet. So, what I'm reading between, so the permit of 1987 clearly defines a condition whereas there's a 100-foot buffer strip imposed along Quiniquisid Avenue. With that being said, section 9.3 of the zoning bylaw in 1995, whereas this permit was approved, says that the board shall require the minimum front yard setback distance along these roadways, which in this case was 40 feet, as identified in the permit.
But the special permit, the planning board at that time required more.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So, at this point, the conversation for the board is, you are being asked to modify this particular permit, you can't allow less than the 40 feet as required in 1985. So, you, you could modify it to only require the 40.
It might be interpreted that we can't allow less than 100 feet, too.
It, and what I'm saying is, that's in your discretion.
Yeah, yeah. So, I think a site visit will really help that, you know, visualize that. I think that's it for me. That was a lot.
Oh, it scared them.
So.
What are we going to, a couple weeks back?
I think that we should have a site visit. Maybe, maybe the first Wednesday in April.
First Wednesday in April? Okay.
Had some month away.
Well, March 1 today, right?
Oh, that's Passover.
Yeah, what are we, what are we looking after continuing?
It'd be the 19th.
19th of?
Of April. Well, what's today, March 1st?
Yep.
We have to, we're going to have a site visit. You have some changes to make.
Yeah.
When do you, when did, I mean, can we do that, we can't do the site visit sometime in March, like hopefully in the next week or two?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I thought you were saying April.
No, 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 I want to have the, I think we should continue this.
The continuance, okay.
To April 19th.
Do we need that much time? I mean, what do we talk?
I mean, I think from.
Well, when are we going to have a site visit? It'll take us a little bit.
You know, if we could do that, if I may, you know, over the next week or two, site visit, and as far as revisions to the plans and so forth, it's really, I don't think it's going to be that intensive. I'll work with Ed, and he and I have gone through his comments, there's really not a lot of revisions, you know, going to be adding some details, et cetera.
We owe you a few things, but we.
Get the landscape plans pulled together, but yeah, I'd say, you know, if we could, you know, if we can do the site visit in the next week or two, and then, you know, maybe like the first.
The first Wednesday in April is a religious holiday.
Oh, the fifth.
Talking about March, you like it early.
So, well, today's the first, right?
Today's, yeah, March 1st, yep.
Are we sure? Because Russia's on the, for the High Holidays with certainty, but I don't, you know, I don't recall if it means Passover.
I think, yeah, it's just a yard dipper, right there.
I don't know, I, I've canceled meetings on Passover before.
There's three Wednesdays in March, are you, is there a meeting on the 29th or not?
Do you want to, you want to have a special meeting on March 29th?
I'm not opposed.
We would prefer that.
Great.
That special meeting could be a site visit?
That, that would be after the site visit.
March 29th and Wednesday, right?
Yep.
So, so I'm uncomfortable, I'm uncomfortable continuing this public hearing to April 5th, right? Because Passover begins. If we waited to the second, the third Wednesday in April, we're talking April 19th. nineteenth, and they're feeling that's too late, right? But in March, we have one, two, three, four, five Wednesdays in March. So if we could have a meeting on March twenty-ninth, we could continue this, this public hearing to March twenty-ninth. I'm around, I'm always around.
Well, okay, what time we gonna have the site visit, cause it gets dark, you know?
Right.
Day.
Do you like babies?
I don't why they have to find Mike, he may get lost.
He might get lost. I'm perfect, Jason.
Just to ask the question, is it not possible to have a site visit next week?
Yeah, it's a big deal, isn't it?
And then have the, the public hearing open, and our regularly scheduled meeting in two weeks?
Have a site visit on a Saturday, is that what you're telling me?
And is that enough time to make changes to the plans?
If we're, if we're to come back, so, continued.
That's what I'm saying, can't we do it next week?
Yeah.
Yeah, do the, do the meeting next week, and then continue to the fifteenth, you're saying, Evan?
I mean, is that agreeable?
Well, I mean, I'm, I have, I had rather meet on the twenty-ninth, I have all those special permits to read, I have the Cape Cod Commission decisions to read, this is a lot of material for me to digest, um, and I, I got the decisions today, so.
But then I have to do a site plan, we're just gonna walk, like you.
But, no, 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 we're talking about two different things. I wanna, I wanna continue this, I wanna continue this meeting till the twenty-ninth.
All right, can we have a site plan?
Yes.
Visit, next week.
Or even Saturday, come on.
Yeah, we'll, we'll accommodate you.
I mean, can we coordinate with, you know, with Evan on, just setting that up, and can be, you know, whatever works for you all, and we'll come up with a time and day, and.
All right, on the site plan visit, should we park in the parking lot at the?
Yes.
You know, we can take.
Yeah, just, we'll, you know, coordinate with Evan, we'll make sure people know you're coming, and, uh, you could walk right across the street, it's very, very close.
Get hit by a car, right?
You could get a car if you want, it's, it's a hundred yards.
I'll make the decision real quick, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Are we gonna pick a date now?
I'll coordinate with you guys after this meeting to arrange a site visit.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I have my calendar.
Oh, tell me a day, and I'll post it.
Or the fifth, or right on the fourth.
So, Monday, Monday's the sixth, that's not good for me, um.
Oh, gee.
And what, what, Monday's out for me, Tuesday afternoon is out for me, um.
What about Saturday?
I could, I could, I could do Wednesday morning, the eighth.
I know, I've got a lot of things going, the sixth, seventh, and eighth, could you make it in the afternoon, any day?
I'm not gonna be around, but you.
All right, so how about, how about the eighth, Wednesday the eighth, at three?
Sounds good.
Be fine with me.
Sorry, I think we're getting tired. And so you post it, um, I, I would like to discuss things on the site, so we'll have to take minutes.
Okay, that's fine.
It doesn't, you don't have to have the public there, but I would like to discuss things. All right. And then I'd like to continue this to March twenty-ninth at seven-ten. Is there a motion for that?
I make a motion to continue the.
I, I saw the, you seconded.
Go ahead.
He already, he already, I, he did a second.
Oh, he seconded, okay.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Very enjoyable, really exposed.
And so again, again, if, um, you know, people want, have, have, wanna see the large-scale plans, see Evan, and if you, if you're not able to attend these meetings, please send in your written comments via email to our town planner, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
I know.
Oh, gosh, Kevin, have, I'm not trying to play.
Yeah, I know.
All right, and I'll get my phone.
Thank you.
Good night, Jack, thank you.
Bye. So, Ed, we're taking like, you know, a little break, but we'll, um, we'll go right to you for reviews and inspections, if you have any, okay?
Sounds good, thank you.
In about five minutes, yeah.
Yeah, I'll be there taking notes, no.
Look at you, you look great.
I got you on that one, all right?
Two days postpartum.
Any day, any day.
Wow.
When are you?
I have a, I have a bag, there's so much stuff on this project, I have a bag. Yes, yes. Look at Cam.
You asked for it.
I did.
You got it.
Somebody has to make it.
I'm very leisurely about this. Is that still on, we're talking?
We're still live, we're just in recess. We won't, we won't be here much longer, I hope.
So I'm gonna reconvene, um, and we are gonna go right to Ed Pesci for board engineer reports. Go ahead, Ed, you have the floor.
Oh, we're back, okay, very good. Um, just making some notes myself. Um, first off, uh, we've done some inspections recently of a couple of areas, one I think is of interest to the board, um, and that is, uh, or, or recent interest to the board, and that is the cottages phase three in New Seabury, there's been some drainage issues there that have been brought to light, and, um, I was asked to take a look at the site to see if there was anything about the roadway construction, the, the site work construction that have, that has contributed to that drainage problem, and I discussed this with, um, with Evan, um, that we did an initial evaluation, initial site visit, um, put some pictures together, and there's nothing in that site visit that really revealed, too terrible, um, you know, terribly obvious, there's one site, there's one location behind the mail kiosk that the drainage isn't perfect, but that has nothing to do with the drainage impacts to the abutters, to the, to the, to the grading concern that they have, of the elevation of the surface grading, um, landscaping, and the distance or, distance or not, or lack thereof, between the top of that grading and the bottom of their, uh, side, household siding. Um, instead of having an eight or ten-inch reveal, there's a lot less than a six-inch reveal, and in some cases, it's almost on top of the grass. Um, so that was one of the concerns that was brought to their, to, to, to the attention of the homeowners association, the homeowners association actually hired an engineer to do an evaluation of this, and kind of listed all the locations that, um, were, were a problem or could be a problem. Recently, we received a letter from, um, Bayswater Cottage, cottages at, at New Seabury, um, LLC, kind of, uh, um, rebutting some of that, and I told Evan that the only way for me to respond to this, and I believe there's adequate amount, um, you know, budget to do this, is I was gonna send my survey crew out to the roads, and shoot some grades on the roads, and then tie that into the existing, um, um, benchmarks that were done or prepared by Boston Survey Consultants, the original, first, BFC group that did the original designs, just so that we could determine whether the existing grade is significantly different than what was originally designed. I'm not gonna do a full asphalt of everything, I'm not gonna do a full topo of everything, but do, uh, centerline of the road, and pick up the grades, um, the rim elevations of a number of structures, so that, uh, we could determine whether there's some major problem with the way the site was graded. I don't anticipate we're gonna see, um, that, that there is, but that's the only way to know, for me to give you that kind of report. And then it's really up to the homeowners association and developer to, to kind of argue over a result or a resolution of that. So that's number one. Number two, um, we are trying to close out one of the projects that started last summer, uh, the Sherwin-Williams retail store out on Route one fifty-one, um, couple of minor things that are left to be done there, uh, did an inspection, and recent punch list was submitted, uh, the punch list included a couple of new items that weren't apparent during the last inspection, um, and I've shared with Evan that that's the latest and last punch list that would be needed to close it out, and the, uh, the developer's already taken action to do something about that. Evan, the, the site contractor, PKM, contacted me via text and said they were taking care of all the things that were in their, in their lane to do, and then they would send me pics when it was done, uh, pictures when it was done. We have also taken a look at, um, in recent weeks, uh, the, uh, you, you're, I'm sure you're aware, the Willow Circle cell division, we're looking for some lot releases, uh, there's a number of things that are not completed there, uh, but it looks like they put, um, you know, that, that, that surety that was required to a lot of lot releases, uh, I think that was something that the board had already, uh, um, discussed, and, and I, I'm not sure if you voted on that yet, I, I believe you did, but, um, that was something that we, we provided some input on as well. Um, lastly, the, um, Country Club Estates is still under construction, that new phase of Country Club Estates, uh, it's been in a little bit of a state of dormancy this winter, um, so they've extended some of the drainage lines and some of the structures, catch basins and drain manholes, and have been slowly but surely, uh, installing some of the water mains, uh, but really not doing any roadway construction at all, just some of the infrastructure, and that's what we've been, been, been inspecting, we've been there, uh, once a month, there's really not much to inspect just yet, um, but we'll be going back out again, um, you know, this week or next week to take a look. Um, and Evan, I know that there was a email that was as, as recent as today, on Aquay Highlands, we've taken a look at that in the past, given some input, um, and some emails to, um, uh, Mr. Moran, about some, uh, um, recommended improvements there, which I believe he is willing to do, um, but, um, you know, we should probably, uh, he, it seems like from the email today, he's willing to meet with the board or meet with staff to go over the remaining effort to, to close that out, they're getting close to doing that apparently, and Evan, I don't know if you have anything you'd like to add on that one.
I can go into the full update on the process, if you'd like me to do that now, otherwise I'll wait.
No, I, I think that we should talk about Aquay, uh, while Ed is on the line.
Yeah, so, uh, the email, Ed was just referring to Jacques Morin emailed me just prior to this meeting, uh, because I had, uh, had an email exchange with him today, he had reached out and asked if he needed to be present tonight, I notified him that, um, he may attend tonight, but he wouldn't be compelled to attend tonight, and that my update to you this evening was solely to provide you with the information I gleaned from town council relative to your interest in enforcing, um, in finding the developer in default of his obligations pursuant to the tripartite agreement you executed between yourselves, the developer, and his mortgager. Um, I notified him that a letter will be, being sent to him this week, um, notifying him of the board's intent to declare, uh, the tripartite agreement in default, uh, and that he would have an opportunity to appear to the board to refute your assertion that he is defaulted in his obligations, um, and that, that, uh, will be discussed at the March fifteenth meeting. Uh, he replied to me with, um, a, a very lengthy email that I actually have not yet had the opportunity to consume, but I thanked him for his email, uh, and looking, and told him I would look forward to seeing him on March fifteenth. So, what council had, um, had suggested we do is to place on our, on an upcoming agenda, a declaration of default for the Aquay Highlands tripartite agreement, with written notice to the developer of your intent to declare the default, um, as to provide him or representative the opportunity to appear before the board. Um, so that's what we are doing, uh, and you'll see that agenda item on March fifteenth.
So, um, did, did the, um, is it Mrs. Dorsey, is that, did?
Yes.
Did she give you those photographs?
She has not, but I can actually reach out to her, I'll remind myself of who that.
Why don't you, and, and I.
I, I have some she's sent to me over time, so I actually have some curated, but I'll double-check with her that I have everything.
And get those to Ed?
And I've sent some, I've sa, I send them regularly to Ed.
And Ed, can you, can you be here on March fifteenth?
So, so, Madam Chair, I was planning to be, uh, present for March fifteenth, you have a couple things on the agenda that have been continued, um, Five Thirty to Main Street and Tudor Terrace, which may get continued again, but I, I thought that I, uh, I had planned, I'm, I'm, uh, gotten through several weeks of physical therapy.
Oh, God love you.
Down, down here with, and I have a surgeon's, uh, follow-up appointment for shoulder, my shoulder surgery, uh, things are going well, so I, I have no problem with flying back to, uh, to be there for, for that meeting, so that was my intention, be there for the fifteenth.
That's great, because, um, um, we're, we're gonna need a lot of technical support for that meeting, um, I also have a question about, if we default on this, right, we have access to this money to finish this work.
Yeah.
Would you check with the town manager to make sure that we have the staff capacity to do that?
To complete the work ourselves?
Right, like, I mean, it's gonna need a project manager, it's gonna need to be procured, it's, you know, there's all those things to do, do, do towns normally hire somebody? Like.
I think the intent would be, we would have to hire a contractor to.
What is, roughly, the cost of each job?
That, I, that, that's the other thing, Ed, I was wondering if you could, could look at the documents and make sure that there's enough money set aside, um, with inflation and everything, um, that's part of the decision.
Just for clarity, we're, we're talking about Aquay Highlands?
It's only the top course of pavement, essentially.
Yes.
For a relatively small section.
It's just, I don't wanna take on something that the town doesn't have a staff person to manage it, or something that because of inflation, the amount of money that we have set aside is not enough to cover the work.
So what do we do? Do we go into court and get a judgment of default?
No, we know, oh, go ahead.
So, um, the, the board can exercise its discretion to find the developer and default of the agreement, uh, at which time we would notify the mortgager of our intent to collect the funds. Um, the board likewise can also request a court action as to define, uh, the roles and responsibilities pursuant to, that each party has, and what each entity's obligations are under the agreement. Um, council opined a little bit on that, and I, I'm drawing from my memory, but essentially, the, the path of least resistance, at least for the board's perspective, is to notify the mortgager and collect the funds to be valid here for the purposes of completing the work.
It's complicated, because you don't wanna do the road before the home's it done, and if you do, then you got some work after that, you know, it gets complicated.
Are you talking a hundred thousand dollars, or any kind of?
It's about fifteen, fifteen dollars a square yard, it's about a hundred thousand bucks per mile, today to do a road.
So, it's far less.
But it's just the top coat, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yes.
It's an inch, inch and a half overlay.
But, um, the, the amount of money the board has available to them for this particular purpose, if the board finds the, the developer default, is, is defined, it's defined in the tripartite agreement, and I can't recall what that dollar figure is, but it would have been cost at the time of the, of, in twenty nineteen.
But now we have to.
Plus fifty percent.
Okay.
So it was cost plus fifty percent.
Fifty percent.
Regardless of whether it's insufficient or not, is it based on a COLA or anything like that?
I mean, it's not, we adj, the board adjusts for inflation, so to speak, by adding that fifty percent.
That's it.
That's it.
But we have to make sure, and I hope, Ed, you can help us with that, to make sure that fifty percent is adequate. I don't wanna get the town into having the responsibility of doing something and not having access to the funds, um, we.
I understand, Madam Chair, I, I don't have any of that documentation on what, uh, the surety is and, and the full tripartite, tripartite agreement, but I'll, I'll get that from Evan.
Thank you.
But from the tone of the email today, I think the applicant is very, very much, um, intending to meet with the board and to try to resolve things.
That's what I have to.
Yes.
Hey, if we do that, take over the roads, is, does the town own that road now?
No, no, it'll still be a private way, subject to the ownership of the homeowners association to be created by the special permit, or by the developer as a condition association to be created by the special permit, or by the developer as a condition of the special permit, um, and it wouldn't convert the ta, the roads to a public layout.
The mortgagee, would the mortgagee push this, uh, this, this, uh, mortgage into default or closure?
I think it's, the surety is held by a bank.
Yes.
Okay.
And we just notified the bank that we're, we're, we're saying this is in default. And then, I, I don't exactly know what happens, but the town has access to those funds to complete the work. I don't know if it gets transferred into the bank account, I have no idea.
The bank would send us a check, the town a check.
Yeah, but then we own that work, so we have, we just have to make sure, I mean, yes, there are parts of, the departments of the town that, yes, pave roads, they, they don't go out and do it themselves, they hire people to do it, they have contractors, but we wanna make sure that we have that staff capacity to manage it.
And they could shortfall in the money?
That's, that, that would, I think there's a different avenue that you would take at that time, but...
And you say it's a hundred grand for a mile of one and a half or two-inch top coat?
It, it all depends on the road, how many curb cuts you got and all the rest of the stuff, but it's about a hundred to a hundred twenty thousand bucks for a mile of overlay, inch, inch and a half overlay.
But our engineer should be able to price that out for us, with the contractors that he knows, right, Ed?
I, I should be able to get some kinda reasonable estimate together if I understand what's, um, I gotta look at what's not been finished, uh, on the site.
Well, is the, is the job in feet, is it like a hundred feet, or is it like a big piece of road?
It's relatively short. I mean, they just did, uh, the top course, or, or secured the top course of pavement at Casper Circle just recently, um, and the, the quoted price for the completion of that top course of pavement was plus or minus thirty-five thousand dollars. And it's a similar amount of...
I would, I would get the address from Evan and drive over. It's, um, it's worth driving over.
Well, I'd, before, before the May, uh, March 15th meeting, I would absolutely go there, I would be, intend to go take a look at it and understand things a lot better. I would even, um, invite, uh, the applicant to meet me there.
That's excellent, thank you, Ed. Okay, so we have a plan.
And so, yes.
Anything else, Ed?
I think we're good on my end, thank you very much, one and all.
Okay, see you soon.
Okay, thank you. Good night, now.
Okay, um, so, local comprehensive plan updates in Weston and Sampson, we got a big data dump from Evan today, yay, and you're still working on that Zoom, that Zoom demo?
It just needs to convert, um, to the video, it's quite long, so it should be done now, and I'll, I have to figure out how to distribute it, 'cause the file size will be large, might just put it on theplanneshpe.com.
I think all I want is the screenshots of people's comments.
That's easy enough, so I should be able to provide that to you before the end of the week?
That's all I want, I, yeah.
Sure.
'Cause there was some, I re, I did not take notes during that, sorry, and there were some pretty interesting comments made during the virtual workshop.
So, um, I'll have those available before the end of the week.
All right, and I think we can, I don't think it's too late to do anything about that. Affordable housing, workforce housing, I have no update, do you have anything about the HPP?
I just wanna let you know that, uh, I wasn't able to get the HPP advertised before I left for Brazil, but I am issuing it for, uh, advertisement on Friday.
Great.
And, uh, the due date for responses, um, is, oh, God, I don't know, it's the first week in April, uh, so we're giving them, I think it's April 7th, but either way, um, I will confirm to you that I've advertised that by the end of the week, and confirm to you also when we're asking responses to be delivered by. Uh, I put in the, the RFQ that I'd like to hold a pre, a pre-submission conference, um, via Zoom or in person, so, um, any board members that'd like to participate in that, I'm always appreciative, um, I'm sure the affordable housing chair will be involved with that as well. But, uh, yeah, a little late getting out the gates with this one, but I'll, I'll get it out this week.
Everything's so busy. Can I have a, um, a, a copy, can you send me a copy of the legal ad once you send it out?
Sure.
Okay. Uh, I haven't heard anything about the regional strat, housing strategy from the Cape Cod Commission, except the Cape Cod Commission did update the Board of Selectmen this week, and there was, I don't know, a page or two about housing, I don't know if you know that, Evan?
No.
Um, but, um, I, the, the meeting packet was not available at that time, so you might wanna look into that, uh, packet, so is this, uh, oh, our selectman liaison just left, a selectwoman liaison just left, but there was, it sounded like there was a page or two, a summary about housing in the region, and then housing in, in Mashpee.
I think Santori said she was gonna send something in, but, 'cause I watched it too.
Yes.
She was, something new coming out, but I don't think that we have the information yet.
Oh, will you check with Rodney for us?
Sure.
Yeah, all right, and if they did put something in, send it to us, that'd be great. Clean water initiative, is there anybody from the public, if you want to say anything, just raise your hand as I'm going through these items? Clean water initiative, floodplain development zoning and tree protection bylaw, still in the works?
Um, on the tree protection, I've given Evan a preliminary draft of it, and Drew has a copy, and we need to get together and figure out when the engagements are.
Yeah, and then, you know, I think, um, as Drew and I bring back comments, Karen will refine that draft a little bit to discuss with the board. Uh, one thing I've, I would like to note, if it's okay, Madam Chair, clean water initiative relative to upcoming, the, uh, clean water articles relative to the increased wetlands buffer for town meeting consideration, uh, we are, we are, um, I sent a press release to the enterprise today to advertise, uh, first two workshops to, for education and engagement relative to that proposal with D R and with conservation. The first of those meetings, I'm gonna have to, my, I, after nine o'clock, my brain gets fuzzy, I gotta pull out the date.
Can we call any engagements workshops?
Yeah.
Okay.
Bear with me, I apologize.
Excuse me.
I'm with you.
I'm so sorry, this is the latest we've gone for a while. Usually in the summer, it's okay.
All right, so, um, first workshop will be held on Saturday, March 18th, at 2:00 PM at the Mashpee Public Library, that's a Saturday.
Wow, okay.
Uh, we were proposing, or we're hosting a follow-up workshop here at Town Hall on April 4th at 5:00 PM in this room. It's very likely that there'll be additional opportunities thereafter, but, uh, we're, we wanted to define that now and get that advertised now, um, because we know people are emerging with questions and we wanna provide answers.
March 18th, what time?
2:00 PM at the library.
Okay.
April 4th, 5:00 PM in Town Hall.
That's an excellent clean water initiative update. Okay. I don't think I have a chairman's report.
And that'll encompass LID?
We're gonna focus, um, on the articles under consideration right now for May, which is the increase of the wetlands buffer, and also contemplate what additional floodplain development restrictions could look like in efforts to, uh, begin building data essentially for the bylaw review subcommittee. But the primary focus will be the wetlands buffer, the town meeting's gonna come fast.
Okay, uh, town planner report. 209 Old Barnstable Road.
I submitted, as I had mentioned to you before, the neighborhood we, I've been working with, uh, has been interested in, uh, traffic impact assessment. I wanted to start that discussion off on the right foot, so I've submitted a letter to the Affordable Housing Trust, or, excuse me, the Select Board in this case, uh, was either the Select Board or the Affordable Housing Trust, I can't remember who the recipient of this letter was, um, requesting, uh, authorization, uh, for a traffic study at the subject property consistent with the densities contemplated in the feasibility study the town, uh, received a number of years ago. So I'm hoping that that gets on an upcoming agenda of the trust and Select Board, uh, relatively soon, and that that authorization occurs. Uh, I've, I've also just launched a, on the planning department webpage, a community engagement and education tab, in that tab is, uh, a few different things, but 209 Old Barnstable Road, Affordable Housing now has a dedicated webpage where I'll be making regular updates.
Okay.
And putting important documents. It's my intent, assuming and hopefully, and hoping that the trust and/or Select Board authorizes the traffic study at the site, which generally, following procurement of a contractor, takes si, four to six weeks, um, to reconvene with the neighborhood thereafter, and then begin, uh, opening this up to a more public participatory process thereafter. But that's moving, it's moving in the right direction.
Who thought you'd be a web designer too?
I'm not, it's, it could be better. Our platform is not the most versatile.
We already did Aquay Highlands, right?
Yes.
Okay, and thank you for working that all out with Ed. Uh, board, uh, board member committee reports, Cape Cod Commission, Christie Santori, the executive director, reported to the, uh, Select Board this week, so that was interesting. And Ernie Vigilio is celebrating his 25th year as a commissioner to the Cape Cod Commission, he's the...
And a boy, Ernie.
I know, okay, yeah. So anyways, uh, community preservation committee meets tomorrow, we're meeting in executive session regarding a land purchase proposal for 751 Route 130, Main Street, and that's still under discussion in executive session. Design review.
Nothing now, next week I'll let you know about Dunkin' Donuts.
Oh, here, or?
I know, no, I gotta look to see, is it the same, I think it's the same one, they're just doing awnings.
Oh, okay.
You know?
Which Dunkin'?
On, uh, 130, unless they're, I don't know the address of 130.
If it's this one, they gotta go to the Historic District Commission.
Yep.
You let them know.
If it's a new one, somewhere else, it's, I think it was 431 or something like that.
Oh, that's gotta be Nathan Ellis Highway. So there's the Dunkin' Donuts in the back of Dino's there.
They said 130.
Okay.
Someone must have...
Good.
Let them know in design review. If it's Dunkin' Donuts on this 130, they need to come to see me for the Historic District Commission.
Okay, thank you for that.
Plan review.
Don't be a shock.
Uh, plan review met, but I was not present, I was still on vacation.
Environmental oversight committee, I think, did not meet, Historic District?
No way for Dunkin' Donuts to go.
That's right.
Anything from public comment?
The old seal, I'm staring at the old seal.
What? Oh, shame on us.
The resolution's pretty poor, I mean, it's open to interpretation.
I didn't realize that.
You all aren't looking at it, but I, thank you. I motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
This was a one.
This was, that, that's, they do, that, that was a big presentation, and, um...
You did a good job, David.
Yeah.